Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the May 30th meeting of the Southern Southern Board of Appeals. Just to take a moment to silence for some moments, please note that this is a recording for FCTV. Is there any member of the public who is recording this meeting? Please come up and identify ourselves on purpose of record and let us know what we are recording.
Um, Taylor Posetti from the Department of Justice.
Thank you. Anybody besides the chair on this start recording, please just recognize by the chair, come and go ahead and speak next quarter. I'll take a moment and introduce members of the board, starting going to the far left. This is Terry Latentis, he's an associate member of the Southern Board. Frank Duffy, he's a full-boarding member. Mark Fenner, he is a full-boarding member. James Morris, he's a full-boarding member. Suzanne Erick, he is a full-boarding member, currently serves as clerk. Scott Peterson, our vice chairman, is running the speaker this evening, as is Tony Pritchett, who is an associate now. We're also joined this evening, Orient Stocker, as an administrator, Ashley Dellow, our reporting secretary, and George Kuchi, our special town councilor. The Southern Board of Appeals is charged or applying state zoning statutes, as well as the town zoning bylaws, are being reported on this application. All sessions are made in the public hearing process, opposed to your testimony, through the evidence of the public, and allow for a full and fair discussion of the project prior to closing the hearing after 180 days. To begin the hearing, the court will bring you public announcements of the hearing, and brief current information from the file. The applicant and the evidence representatives will have the time to do their presentation. Before the question can be asked, we're going to have to make a comment. Public comments should be recorded only as a project, communicate an opinion in favor or opposition, or ask questions about the project itself. Comments should be limited to two minutes. Chair will limit the discussion to the interests of time, and comments become effective. All members of the public who wish to comment, come to the podium. Please, with your recognition by the chair, please state your name and the purpose of the record. Please speak into the microphone, and the live fire voices, as well as recording for FCTV.
Mr. Chairman, this is a procedure for, yes, I suppose, whatever word you want to go in for the record, either two members in the act. With two members not here, and one associate member here, I can't remember the status of who has missed in the mullbuckle and all of that.
These will be your five voting members.
Okay, these were my three, they're five, and that's ten. Appreciate your thinking.
Jim?
Yes?
I will at this point. Jerry, I'll be the voting member for the United States.
Yes.
Have you been in order to?
Yes.
If I hadn't, I filed a mullbuckle.
How many were?
And you've only missed one.
Yeah.
I've filed one. All right. Any files? There are any files? First, on the season agenda, will be public comment. This public comment is reserved for any matter that is not specifically referenced on the season agenda. Does anyone else want to make a comment about anything that is not specifically on the season's agenda? Ron?
Good evening, gentlemen. This is from President 99 Alvin Road. Members of the Select Board, just speaking out loud, although this, I'm referring to the letter received, addressed to this Select Board, and this forwarded along with you guys discussing this Select Board. This is from, I don't know if I have it, it was a senior scientist at the Rebellions Laboratory, I don't know what department he's in, but this is regarding the habitat and environment. Should I read the letter, or just mention the court's details?
Mr. Chairman, this is from the record, this is my last. Is this regarding the 375 question, or is this?
Is it?
This is public comment on things that are not the agenda. I would think public comments are 375 later on this time.
Right, right. Forward.
Anyone else who would like to make a public comment about anything other than 3757? This is from 375 Sandwich Road, Saxon Parkers. It fell long days. We have one continuation. Hearing 09323, Southley LLC, requesting the concrete department to destroy 300 rental apartments throughout five separate buildings, clubhouses, and condos. Subject properties are 0 and 375 Sandwich Road, Eastside. We are here after a grand continuance, 180-day period. The applicant, the last time we proposed, see if there was the desire within the town to acquire essentially conservation, conservation easement for the town. Two members of this board herself, and Mr. Duffy did meet with two members of the Select Board Chair, Mrs. Wilson, as well as the town manager, to discuss what the proposal was, and we've incurred, you know, week tomorrow. There are, we were, after a discussion, several problems with the proposal, primarily that we didn't have time to create a piece of parcel, essentially purchased, there's no time to be early, so we didn't have any type of funding, we didn't have any member on town meeting, so essentially report that there was not a significant political appetite to pursue that particular option. But we did agree to do it, we have had that opinion, we do think, and suggest that's essentially where we are. Frank, do you have anything to add?
I think you're correct.
So, like we just asked, the elements are clear at this point. What is now going to be replicated is essentially the original plan in the southeastern corner of the property notice.
We should also just note for the record that the Select Board did not, or the board did not have the opportunity to put forward the proposal.
No, absolutely, it was, it wasn't actually the time, but it properly noticed what we had.
David Kelly, Saxon Parkers. It sounds to me like time and condition, if that is the case, and the desire is still there, for us to be, perhaps we should have more discussion on that one. Because what we were originally proposing and doing was, we would give, we'd go through the process, complete what we have in progress, hopefully we see a positive response with reasonable conditions. And what we would do, we were putting into that decision 120 days, which would give the town the opportunity to determine if they wanted to do it. So that we could potentially get a decision, they had two options. They had an option A, which was spend enough time, and then option B, which was moving the project as requested to the west, and creating five acres of conservation, plus additional conservation land, and also the work. At the request, board member Hurley, in the last year, we made a request, what does it really going to look like? If the board would like, we did go to the step, to our own rest. Bill Pinyer was here with us, looking to have him walk you through it. It is pretty neat plan, and we could then have a further discussion on what potential for records look like, what the conditions would look like, and then the moving conditions. As far as time to get a appraisal, that type of thing, we could then structure, if you need additional time, you know, if I'm trying, we could possibly talk to that, develop the conditions in our decision. But if we'd like to look at that one, we took it to the next level, if you'd like to see it from Phil's side.
Mr. Chairman?
I'd like to ask this kind of funny question. Are you expecting us to vote on Plan A and each night, or the caveat that you would do that? I've never heard of us voting on Plan A and B in the same permanent advocate.
If I may get a correct, this is not intended to get a review announcement from the meeting app. So, and that was a very good question. I think where we're at is, we have a plan that we think you are more likely to approve, and we need to prehand it, because we're not withdrawing that, but we reserve all of our rights under initial submission, and the Plan A, with the refinements and bringing this result of the period, we won all that and forth. So, I think what we're intending to say is, we'd like to show you the side of what you appointed, Plan A, and we get to you to come up with a decision as to what you think you approve, should be, we're observing your rights, we're going to be getting on Plan A. But we would have to see what type of conditions is put on to the new proposal, Plan B, and the decision, before we know whether we're satisfied with it. And, you know, we do think if you don't want any more input, then here you're going to be closed today. But if, after reviewing and a few minutes of the Plan A described by Phil, you know, you want to talk about that, and together we could go over that, then this is a date that perhaps, you know, we can change it one more time. So, actually, I would go over that.
So, all this is for the board, but I personally like to see what the more detailed Plan B.
I'd also love to see Plan B, I'd also like Tom counsel, our special counsel, to weigh in.
Mark?
Hi.
Oh, I'm not looking. Frank?
I'm first, because, no, I'm looking, as Mark just said, they've done the act, if there's something you want to show us, we should look at it.
Your thoughts?
I have no advice against your N B. If you don't mind, we can, we can give you. I'll stack up later.
While this is being distributed, I know there are problems, and applications, or anyone who's having difficulty hearing this tonight?
Thanks, you're welcome. You might go back and sketch before I go. That's where we started a few weeks ago, when we gave you a pencil sketch of what we're doing, and the idea of removing the entire project, same number of units, same building height, same style. So, we went back to the board, and we think we got it to the point where we're able to hit on all the things that were referred in the last six months. And if the board, at the turn of the field, is going to walk through it, and you've got to show where, from where we moved the clubhouse to, to where we moved dog park, to where we moved the trash to, that, I think, we can quickly give you some distances that we're from away from the neighbors, and I think it'd be pretty impressive how far we're going.
For the record, excuse me, Phil Boehrger, from Allen, Engle, Associates, full-size Engle, professional Engle here. Thank you, David, for the setup. So, just as a quick refresher, obviously, what David was saying about the plan is what we noted as a pencil sketch at the last hearing. It was not a fully formed plan, but rather ideas put on paper, that seem to address a lot of feedback and concerns, that we had heard from the board, we had heard from the public, we had also heard from periodic consultants in a number of different areas. I won't spend a whole lot of time on this particular plan, other than stating, I guess, repeating what David just mentioned, no changes to the number of units, no changes to the number of buildings, no changes to the number of, to the building height. Those will carry forward into the plan that David just presented to the board, and now if you could advance to the current plan on the slide show. So, what we have done is hold the general layout of the buildings, so very quickly, we still have five buildings, those still total 300 units. The plan still shifts out very much westerly from what we referred to as Plan A on the prior plan, but allowing me to walk through, to take you from Sandwich Road to the site development plan. The connection to Sandwich Road remains the same, the divided Boulevard roadway remains the same, the bus south, the parking area, the pull-off, the signage, the lighting, the enhanced landscaping to the butter, those all remain the same. Coming into the roadway, the curvature of the roadway remains the same. I'm actually going to correct myself. I'm going to change the terminology, I'm going to use the term driveway, as opposed to roadway. And the reason I'll start by saying that is, under the previous plan of Plan A, we were subdividing the parcel. Under the subdivision rules and regulations, we were actually creating a roadway that could frontage. This plan is a driveway. It is the same in terms of geometry, it is the same in terms of dimension, it would meet the standards of a roadway under the Form C, the definitive rules and regulations of the town family. But we are not asking the board, under Plan B, to approve this as a Form C subdivision. So henceforth, I would refer to this as a driveway. So, as I continue to commit on the driveway, as we decide, we would still have an adequate area for our wastewater reaching field to the west of our community's electrical easement. But then if you went through the site along the driveway, under the pencil sketch plan, we did have to send it to the parcel, and then you have the clubhouse feeding off of the parcel. What you will, first and foremost, you'll notice that we're doing differently, is we are bringing the driveway a little more narrowly. We are very much respecting that healthy buffer and the concerns of the residents to the north of us, that that driveway does not approach, there is no retaining wall, there is a greater than, we wrote the notes, 100 feet of natural tree buffer from the end of our roadway to the property line, conceived under this Plan B option. As you continue to enter into the site, we're giving our residents to a focal point, and so this is a roundabout area that will support our clubhouse just to the east. Upon further study of the sketch plan to this plan today, is our clubhouse, which is an amenity center to the residents, which is the mail center, which is the package center, we became very much detached from the community that we were seeking to depart from. So, we did relocate that from the pencil sketch to this new Plan B option. We wanted to draw the residents in with the focal point. It may be a flat hole, it may be identification, excuse me, it may be discussed in landscaping things, but it's something complimentary to the welcome room of our clubhouse. You'll also notice that we do still retain the standalone clubhouse. This, this is sort of a retroactive design to the very first plan that the board had seen, but this clubhouse is smaller than the original ones, above 9,000 square feet. Ashed wrong, it's 80 by 125, and then just behind it is our main package, in which we'll have the pool, we'll have some outdoor seating areas, we'll have square, we'll apply other bases and light. All of that has been shifted moderately, so that activity center, whatever perceived noise made, amount of that activity center is tucked towards the sand hill, away from our neighbors to both the south and the east. Directly adjacent to that amenity center is a dog park, is a playground, those areas carried through from all of the prior plans, but again, very much intentionally centered and moved towards the middle of the area of the site, adjacent to the sand hill. What you'll notice on this site plan, moving backwards a little bit, is the other epicenter of activity, whether or not you consider amenity and/or necessary infrastructure, we do have the dumpster facility, our dumpster and recycler center, and also our maintenance building, which will be for routine maintenance of the site, as we also noted prior, will provide secondary storage for cars, bikes, storage, etc. for the residents. We have relocated that to the western portion of the site, where I just committed, it'll be decently kept off of the main site driveway to continue those site visual that I'm talking about, but also be far enough away from, and our residents, our resident neighbors on the south, our resident neighbors on the east. So, we've relocated everything to the front of the site. Now, in doing that, we do still maintain the circulation around all of the five buildings. We do have parking fields around all of them. We've added some double days to the westerly sideline, we've added some parking along the easterly sideline, to make sure that the parking is evenly distributed across the site, around all of the 300 units. That can also afford us to infrastructure off sheeting. So, we did discuss with this board, a great line, snow management, where is that occurring on site, and now we have very large, well-defined areas along the western portion of the site that we can provide for snow maintenance during the winter time conditions. But then during arid conditions, we can integrate in stormwater basins down the west and the eastern portion of the site, these are above-ground basins. They are truly more cost-effective than underground systems, they are visual, they're open, as we mentioned during the Plan B discussion at the prior hearing, those will show depressions in the topography, but they are great, they're not heavily made with rocks, and they will integrate into what we'll do for the state of the environments. All of that, collectively in total, has allowed us to maintain what we've discussed all along, and that is, notably, along the southern parking line, there is a hardened ass, 50-foot natural buffer maintained, so the green shaded area is 50 feet, no cumulative mat, if you will, that I've discussed previously with the board, 50 feet, triad true. Beyond that, we do carry forward the berm that we talked about, the sweeping berm ahead of the new construction area, that's an additional three, excuse me, two and a half foot berm in height, with its three-to-one side slopes, well landscaped, well landscaped along the front side, and then well landscaped, as your conservation permission noted in the prior letter that we received at the May 30 hearing, regarding the landscaping on the backside of the berm, as well to prevent the invasive species coming in. So, all total, it will end up with greater than 50 feet, but at a minimum, it will be 50 feet of natural buffer. Along the easterly portion of the site, this dark shaded green area represents five acres, five acres of natural buffer, not to be off, with depths of approximately 450 feet, plus or minus, considering the exact, 428 feet, from this proposed three natural buffer line to the angle point of our property line. And here, as you approach the sidelines of the property, that natural depth is above 330 feet, just because the property line begins to taper. Now, based on the layout of these buildings, as I'm walking through Building C, the angle on Building C, this corner, to the nearest parking line, is 542.7 feet. Now, that's much greater than what you saw on Plan A, Plan B, which is 107. So, again, if you've listened, we've shifted that way, we've increased that distance by almost refold, or almost exactly refold through the area for general discussion. Along the southern parking line, the distance to the nearest building is 145 feet, so from these corners, they're all essentially parallel to the parking line, that's 145 feet, whereas on Plan A, you saw that as 124. So, additional distance of 21 feet, plus or minus, that those buildings have shifted moderately, close to the traffic there, or most certainly away from the resident neighbors to the south of us. In terms of general land area, to screen board off of the notion that this is not a subdivision, the development is not here, will take place on approximately 23, 24 acres, with the five acres that are referred to here, the developed green space, that's the area located in the subject, on to the discussion of this Select Board. But the development here, the development is down 23, 24 acres, whereas under the prior plan, we have block one, we have block two, we also provide a big area, the building is down, and swallowed into the same development, and that's the area. Last, a quick mention, parking, this then, which has popularly been used to be parking spaces, maybe 507 huge parking spaces, we do have one extra parking space across the site, that really created this element of the simple geometry, obviously, if anything, starting from that, it's kind of multiple blocks, it's covered, we have that, we have that. We're starting with Plan A, we can sustain here. We're not going to preserve any of the planning, we're not going to park a lot of those. We're not going to, we're not going to. 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 We're not going to.[694.12]
Adjacent to the sand pit. What you'll notice on this site plan, moving backwards a little bit, is the other epicenter of activity, whether or not you consider amenity and/or necessary infrastructure, we do have a dumpster facility, a dumpster in the central center, and also our maintenance building, which will be for routine maintenance of the site, because we also, in the prior, will provide secondary storage for cars, bikes, storage, etc., for residents. We have relocated that to the western portion of the site, to where it should be made. It will be decently kept off of the main site driveway to continue those site visual that I'm talking about, but also be far enough away from, and our residents, our resident neighbors on the south, our resident neighbors on the east. So we've relocated everything to the front of the site. Now, in doing that, we do still maintain the circulation around all of the five buildings. We do have parking fields around all of them. We've added some double days to the western sideline, we've added some parking along the eastern sideline, to make sure that the parking is evenly distributed across the site, around all of the three hundred units. That can also afford us to infrastructure up cheaper. So we did discuss with this board a great line, snow management, where does that occur on site? And now we have very large, well-defined areas along the western portion of the site that we can provide for snow maintenance during drought and cold conditions. But then during arid conditions, we can integrate stormwater basins down the west and the eastern portion of the site, these are above-ground basins. They are truly more cost-effective than underground systems. They are visual, they're open. As we mentioned during the meeting discussion in the prior hearing, those will show depressions in the topography, but they are great. They're not heavily laden with rocks, and they will integrate into what we'll use for the state of the environment. All of that collectively in total has allowed us to maintain what we've discussed all along. And that is notably along the southern parking line, there is a hardened-ass fifty-foot natural buffer maintained, so the green shaded area is fifty feet. No cumulative mat, if you will, that I've discussed previously with the board. Fifty feet, try to true. Beyond that, we do carry forward the berm that we talked about, the sweeping berm ahead of the new construction area. That's an additional three, excuse me, two-and-a-half-foot berm in height with its three-to-one side slopes. Well landscaped, well landscaped along the front side, and then well landscaping, as your conservation permission noted in the prior letter that we received at the May 3 hearing regarding the landscaping on the backside of the berm, as well to prevent the invasive species coming in. So, all total, it will end up with greater than fifty feet, but at a minimum, it will be fifty feet of natural buffer. Along the eastern portion of the site, this dark shaded green area represents five acres, five acres of natural buffer, not to be off, with depths of approximately four hundred and fifty feet plus or minus, confirm the exact, four hundred and twenty-eight feet from this proposed three natural buffer line to the annual point of our parking line. And here, as you approach the sidelines of the parking, that natural depth is above three hundred and thirty feet, just because the parking line begins to taper. Now, based upon the, these buildings, so plowing through Building C, the angle on Building C, this corner, to the nearest parking line, is five hundred and forty-two point seven feet. Now, that's much greater than what you saw on Plan A, which is a hundred and seventy. So again, if you've listened, we've shifted that way, we've increased that distance by almost refold, or almost exactly refold through the area for general discussion. Along the southern parking line, the distance to the nearest building is a hundred and forty-five feet. So from these corners, they're all essentially parallel to the parking line. That's a hundred and forty-five feet, whereas on Plan A, you saw that as a hundred and twenty-four. So additional distance of twenty-one feet plus or minus, that those buildings have shifted no other way, close to the traffic lane, are mostly away from the resident neighbors to the south of us. In terms of general land area, to screenboard off of the notion that this is not a subdivision, the development is not here, will take place on approximately twenty-three hundred acres, with the five acres that are referred to here being a developed green space, that's the area located in the subject, on to the discussion, that's for. But the development here, the development is down to twenty-three hundred acres, whereas under the prior plan, we have Block One, we have Block Two, we also provide a big area of those that have been swallowed into the same development, and that's the area. Last number, quick mention, parking. This then was as popular as the eighteen parking spaces, ten acres and five hundred and seven huge parking spaces. We do have one extra parking space across the site, that really created this element of a simple geometry. Obviously, if any of you study for that, it is now a multi-公里 space, I wonder, we have that. So, we start on Plan A, we maintain the same area. Good luck with that. We're not going to be reserving any of that, helping you associate the parking scenes that are part of what those elements are. So if you just have a mention, kind of, where you're, is this plan, you're, because we belong to seven acres, the wave is more related, helps that, maybe, maybe this person comes in, or, those are the problems, and that is, if this is.
Happy to pause there, answer any questions the board may have, get into more granular detail if you would.
If you would have questions, start with me, Jerry.
No.
Now, this land, right, sort of, I just thought for a minute, so, I don't know. Please. You want this one bus stop that will sort them in the corner?
Here.
Oh, sorry, what's that?
Uh, this one? Well, so, we do still have a lot of different plant building, that one of those controls the importance of the chemicals. So that, that piece of building, it's sort of in the elements, and we need to find a right amount of it on the revised plan. And that one really coming into play relative to how those fields are now, relative to that massive P P permit. So, a bit of this known, that this sort of city area, this space, I guess I would ask the board to take away that when we need that building, we believe some parking for it, for maintenance and access, but the final placement of that will be somewhere along the western portion of the public side, to the west of the east.
And then, the stormwater basin, the one in the middle of those three areas, you said that organized, and past?
Uh, it's a depressed, so it is, it is a depression to collect the whole stormwater allowed to reach out on site, but it is correct and fully correct.
How big is that?
Uh, I don't have the number with me. I would guess it's probably twenty to thirty thousand square feet in terms of footprint area that that defines, keep it down. Uh, so we actually, we try to defend the stormwater basin, we really want to make sure that these basins are well-maintained, there's no traction, we give it less against that fence line, but fencing, certain, certain things that we've discussed, the pressures.
And which is the one where they will damage?
Uh, so, so that's actually a designation area for the snow storage.
I'd like to see what you have.
Uh, so, I have snow storage here, and then we go in, and we have our biggest building and our traction culture, then a stormwater basin, and then additional snow storage. So that's that, and there, I guess, sorry to get into your question, but I failed to mention, we actually also introduced an additional dog park to the plans. So we actually separately have a dog park, so we have a small one by the sand pit, but then we have a larger one to the west of the step, to follow it. Any of this, like, three feet?
What's that, the ancient Asian swales, or whatever, what's that?
Uh, it'll be three or four feet, three or four feet below ground. Well, you know, you can drown six feet into the water, but the rules for it allows, you know, stormwater policy, but then if you get out of sixty-nine, anything deeper than six feet has kind of a particular problem, so we want to have that. And then, when we put a stormwater and a well foundation, and absolutely, you know, they're set up each lives, we don't have a problem here, the little sand that will flush it. Uh, well, you know, as the manager has mentioned, we would not only take a defense, but something we certainly discussed, the pressures of fencing. We, we try to not fence the basins, people facilitate, maintain, ensure access, like a mandatory creation, whereas you put out a fence, and something like that, you pass a wall around the thing, and now, you're noticing them more intentionally, rather than parallel to them, and sort of disappearing.
Yes, I do. This is not necessarily related to the planning, right, if it does, it can also be analyzed with you, because you have to do this. How many of you really ever talked about the wastewater treatment plan? Well, all the wastewater contained within any building?
So, so none of the wastewater actually goes into a building. So then, the happening from here, is the entire of this site is collected from standard sanitary sewer pipe. It's piped to an underground tank farm, so all it has to do is go to the tanks below grade. It's hanged, it stays below grade, stays in the tank. It is then pumped from one tank to another to allow it to settle, because then goes to another tank, which may be introduced with some chemical treatment to further settle, and then from there, once all of the treatment tanks are completed, is then pumped to be redistributed through the field, and recharged down under the ground. What the building does, is it offers a consolidated location to house mechanical equipment, the electrical control panels, some drums of chemicals if we have to provide, have limited heat into the wastewater treatment system. It also provides advantage in the area for the treatment plant operator, to all of the bookkeeping and records, it'll have the bathroom, it'll have the washing station, basically, and murder, and things like that. So the sewage doesn't actually go into the building.
Well, I actually appreciate that, because I hope you've really discussed that in the past, when I said, "Port, please, you know," unless the wastewater is honestly contained within the underground tanks, it's a big necessity for odor control.
So, we do have, so all of this, by the way, as a, a boat type, all of this is documented through the ASMR, so you'll see all of those details. But to answer your question, there are blowers that will be integrated into part of this project, and the blowers introduce air, it introduces oxygen and else with the treatment. There are vents to some of these tanks.
Those vents may be fitted with charcoal filters to address odor control.
Yes. Follow on. On the tanks that are completely below ground, how are they going to be maintained? Most wastewater people, all of them are unfamiliar with, have open-hand access, so, and I know it's about a D E P. The other thing is, you made an estimate of the blowers, what type of, I know the order should dress, what about the noise, vacuuming the noise?
So, so two questions there, to answer the first one, so the access is a, is a standard manual cover, anything that you would see in the street, so they would be sealed from access, likely to be blocked, so that way there's restricted access, but you would basically see the flat surface area, remove and cover, that would provide no access. Maintenance of the tank per se, the, the tanks don't provide maintenance, it's actually what's in them. So the tanks are performing settling, they're, they're drawing the solids out of the effluent, and then routinely, those solids are actually backed up by, by opening the tank and sucking it out. To your second question about the blowers, we've not selected any of them, that, that comes in due course, but you're absolutely right, sir, there are different varieties of blowers. The effectiveness of the blower is related to the cost of the blower, is related to the bearing system of the blowers, it is directly related to the noise of the blower. So those will all be looked at, and choose, select the right ones in the right location. And what I mean by that is, if you had a field that is literally, or a blower farm literally directly next to a home, you would want to use the upgraded blowers, the least amount of noise, et cetera. When it's far away from a home, or a noise interceptor, a sensitive noise interceptor, you might even sacrifice some of the noise that affects the other home. That all has to be studied and also can be looked at, certainly in there.
A follow-up question. None being on wastewater, as air is injected into the stuff, unless it's an open room. You're saying, other than the blowers circulating, like, atmospheric air, you know, you don't, with our D E P, how will you interject, inject, air or oxygen to help the decomposition?
So, that's an excellent question, and it is an incredible amount of detail in what you've asked, and with respect, I will defer that technology to our wastewater consultant through the process. Because what I may say from my exposure and experience, might, might contradict what he's ultimately going to do with treatment at the end of the day.
Sure. Any other follow-up questions?
So the solids, the solids stay in the tank, and then once they're, when they need to be removed, they're, they're brought out by a licensed hauler who can bring them to a receiver. That receiver could be, could be the town of Falmouth, if they needed seed soils, or it could be another receptor. So I don't know the direct answer to that, but obviously, it would be an area licensed to take them, and have the ability to take them.
So you're not expecting the town to take it?
We're, we're not expect, we're not assuming the town will take it. The town may want it. Sometimes, when you're, when you're balancing out these complicated sewage systems, they may need additional solids to, solids to adjust that chemistry. Again, I'm out of my lane, and I'll defer to the, to the wastewater consultant, but it's not an assumption that the town is getting it, no.
Sorry.
We'll do the same.
Anything else? Tori?
So, with these proposed detention ponds, if you were to leave that open, would you be able to do something like some plantings, so that it would be maybe toward like a rain garden type of thing, or maybe put some boulders in there, just so that it doesn't randomly look like a depression?
So, so boulders, perhaps. Rain garden is, is an entirely different and very specific terminology, and these, these are not that.
Right. I guess I'm thinking maybe some plants that would like that type around the perimeter, so that it doesn't look like a meteor hit your car, right? And created a depression, then.
Yeah.
Really out of place.
So, so excellent question. We, we could look at landscaping around the basins, but we wouldn't put landscaping within the basin, within the basin bottom, or on the side slopes, for obvious function and maintenance purposes. But, but landscaping around the edges could certainly be something we could look at. You know, again, we, we're looking to try to integrate these into the environment, so by putting up a fence, the fence might make it sort of, you know, intentionally visible, and the same thing could happen if you put up too much landscaping, you go, what's, what's going on behind that landscaping? But carefully placed landscaping could start to erase some of that crater blending concern you're, you're noting.
Anything else, or?
So, for all your buildings, et cetera, so you're just going to go strictly to these detention ponds, as opposed to any underground storage?
The, the goal is to go to both of these stormwater areas, because they're, they're quite large, and you should be able to accommodate all of the stormwater. But, we would, we would reserve the right for an opportunity that we may need smaller underground systems. You know, if, if we're unable to get all of the stormwater directly to these ponds, interim solutions may be necessary. And the buildings are excellent candidates for things like that, maybe there's a small system within the courtyard, or just underground, under the parking lot, as you saw under the previous application. But the intent is to not do that, and to go to the two systems on the east and the west side.
So would that give you an opportunity, then, to potentially capture stormwater that may hit like the tops of the roofs to be repurposed, as opposed, you know, for landscaping, or something like that, as opposed to using a pool of water?
Uh, you know, so there, there's certainly opportunities to, you know, capture runoff water from a building, you know, you're referring to like rain barrel, or a cistern. I think, you know, if you, if you looked at it from a residential house, you could put a couple of rain barrels out there, when it rains, those fill up, you know, on a reasonable pace. These, these are fairly large buildings, and those rain barrels would fill up very, very quickly, or you would need some sort of very, very large underground cistern that might, might start to become impractical. And I know there's, there's a sensitive receptor there, that we're asking for either a well or municipal water for irrigation, whichever is allowed by the town, but we're asking for that under the premise that everything we take, we're, we're putting it right back into the ground. So one hundred percent of our stormwater is going into the ground, so there's no aquifer loss. Any water that we use for irrigation, whether it be from a driven well, or cisterns, or anything else, it goes right back into the ground, so it's a, effectively a closed loop in terms of a water withdrawal application. And, and in there, a cistern might become unnecessary, I dare say.
Mr. Chair?
Sure.
A couple of times, you've said that you may have to do revisions, and I'm trying to guess what those revisions would be. It could be considered substantial, an insubstantial change, which one would require a full vote, the other would require a decision by the administrator.
Yes.
Okay. In your estimation, are any of these things substantial or insubstantial?
Uh, well, you, you get to make that determination, right? That's your, your power and authority, so I, I wouldn't want to assume that. You know, and, and at the risk of standing between two attorneys, multiple attorneys, obviously, the statute is, lays out guidance as to what they consider to be substantial changes, number of units, size of units, size of buildings, things like that. It doesn't speak to whether or not my stormwater system, whether it gets bigger, smaller, moves left or right, as to whether that's a substantial change under that statute, but you all have importance in the stormwater, you may determine it to be substantial. So, a sort of a bait of the answer to your question, because that, that lies with the building.
No, thank you. I was really looking for a clarification to help the audience, because a couple of times, I looked out, and, you know, changed here, changed there, I was rolling back, as little as I could see.
Yeah. And I guess, I guess I can bow and point your comment to me. Three weeks ago, I showed you a hand-drawn sketch, we have it. This is a more engineered plan, this is one hundred percent dimensionally accurate, it is the area that we need, it meets all of the requirements, it meets parking, the buildings, et cetera. So this is an engineered plan that has been advanced from that prior, that prior pencil sketch. When I say changes, what I mean by that is, I still need to take it from this preliminary plan approval, that if this board so chooses to issue under a permit, to final constructible plans. And in that delta, from today to tomorrow, there are tweaks that I need to make, and those are the changes that I'm using by the term change. Now, you can, in your conditions, again, at the risk, standing between all the attorneys, you know, any conditions that you create, you could determine, any changes have to come back in front of this board. Or you can, you know, designate an alms budman to look at it, somebody within the town to then make that determination and recommendation to the board. I'm obviously just, just putting those notions out there, those are for folks smarter than I to vet out with you.
Okay.
You want her?
No.
She there? I'm going to hide that on my generators again?
Okay.
Are they on this plane?
Uh, the, the one at the treatment plant remains on the plan.
That is?
That is the one that we know we need for one hundred percent certainty, because our wastewater system needs to operate extensively in, in the event of advanced power outages. As we mentioned before, the buildings themselves for emergency lighting don't require generators, because battery packs are built into the modern lighting systems.
How do they get down the elevator, if you're on the fourth floor?
So, so we obviously, there would obviously be a staircase, I don't know if, the elevator would, would be on a battery backup, a battery backup within the building.
Can condition a battery-packed elevators?
Yes, yes. So no, we, so we're not showing any generators on the site plan, other than the treatment plant, as the known generator needed.
And there'll be a, a maintenance plan for the batteries?
Of course.
That's a safety issue, having somebody on the fourth floor.
Yes, of course. And I would, you know, the elevator permit would dictate that, the fire department would of course reinforce that.
And what's the length of the road now?
Um, it is the red, the length of the driveway, and I don't mean to correct you, but I want to be clear.
I forgot.
Uh, is fourteen hundred and one feet from Sandwich Road to the roundabout.
And you don't, you don't know the full, the full yet for the wastewater generator?
We, we don't, we talked about it, it could be liquid propane, it could be gas, it could be diesel. There, there are options there, and there are preferential options, and that ought, Mr. Finer and suggested some of them at the last meeting as well.
And are there still some stubs up by that roundabout?
Stubbs for?
You had stubs for, for sewage?
Uh, we had, so, we had subs, uh, excuse me, we had stubs for sewage tied into our, so the sanitary sewer collection system for the community will come down through the parking fields, comes down the driveway to approximately here, the tank farm that I'm referring to will be somewhere in here. We extended two stubs, one southerly and one northerly, to the extent that we needed to take on additional capacity if the town required that to occur. Though, um, under the previous discussions, we noted that if the board preferred us not to do them, we would not do them, but we are still carrying them forward. Yes, but they're not at the roundabout, just to be clear.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other presentation from the applicant?
I'd like to ask you a question about the, the pond.
Certainly.
I don't think this is for you, Mr. Caderro.
Okay.
You're up. I'd just like some, Mr. Calhoun, I'd just like some clarification for, for what we're being presented with. You have presented us the so-called Plan B, which is the one Mr. Caderro just spent about forty-five minutes explaining, and we appreciate his efforts. Now, but what you are expecting this board to do is vote on the original plan, which we'll call Plan A, and there were two iterations of that, there was one back, I think, at the early part of the filing, and another one a couple of months ago, where you responded to some of our comments. You want a vote on that iteration of the project, and then, assuming that it is a positive vote, and you have a comprehensive permit in hand, then, you then talked about the fact that the town would then have a hundred and twenty days in which to exercise an option to purchase the open space that you have shown on Plan B. I would like to know when that hundred and twenty days begins and when it ends, can we have an agreement on that?
Mr. Duffy, if you'd like, what we did is, because we knew you'd be asking the question, we took a shot at what that condition would look like, and I'm happy, we have copies for the board. And I'm happy we have copies for the board. Jack, do you mind handing those to the board?
Can you put it up on the screen or read it to us?
Sure. The applicant is agreeable to extend to the town and/or a land and/or open space conservation entity acceptable to the town, the opportunity to acquire at fair market value Saxon's future development plan. And this all goes back to many of the requests of the board members, what were we doing with the other land and at the right time, we would like to develop it or sell it. So we extend it, but to, excuse me, the opportunity to acquire at fair market value Saxon's future development plan and the inclusion of open space. The option to acquire the land will run for 120 days from the date of a decision approving the current plan. Now, the new layout described below, this five-foot town quarter would condition it acceptable to the applicant in the yard of the field. The new layout could create open space, will shift buildings to relate the site improvements in the project approximately 430 feet to the west and realign the access road, offer for limited guest intended, new layout plan on P B. The D A N, that's my own, we have a plan, confirms the new layout plan on P B will be approved by the administrator, the applicant filed a record plan with affidavit, that all four votes prior spin have been met, the new layout plan, the D A N, the doors are planted, statement turned within the 21 days that the applicant submitted the new layout plan, which required an affidavit to the D A N. And it's the proposed condition to move that decision. If you find 120 days, the 120 days, say it closed tonight and you guys were able to get a decision on the record, once that's on the record, say if it's on record within 30 days, there's then an appeal period. That appeal period would have to be exhausted, so we're now out, well into the end of July. And then there would be 120 days from that point for you to make a decision for the town if they want to buy the open space. If you need additional time, you can always put in extra language that would say, you know, if we're making progress and you need to do something, a reasonable extension.
You say this is an option to acquire land, we'll continue upon the date that it's more than 120 days to make a decision. So do we have to exercise the opportunity to say that we're viable, we actually got a swap?
We would interpret that, that you would have to decide your own.
Okay. That doesn't necessarily ask the closing of the 120 days, but there has to be a binding agreement to the process?
Yes.
Okay.
If that needed to be 160 days, 180 days, provided we're making good progress and avoiding problems with the dozens.
The other, despite there's a condition in here that the application would approve with conditions that are unacceptable by the applicant. So if we issue a conference, it's got a couple of conditions and you're guaranteed that it's all in the name of our act.
That probably wasn't a good thing to see, we need to get a board's brief, you know, what they could see as a purpose of the institute. We provide this to the board, pretty simple, listing conditions, and those will prove to address everything, everything from, you know, short-term residence, practice for a family, residential residence, the property say affordable, property, the normal, as the rate of interest, we provide those to them. I don't know if the board has actual norms that they want to add, but for example, all sudden, you gave a decision, you said, you don't have to provide an app, that would be acceptable, but a good, fair, reasonable decision supporting everything that would have gone through would be acceptable.
Okay, well, in some respects, this, all this, some of it, we definitely really don't know what's gonna happen.
It sounded like you were going to lose it, but the intent was, listen to what you said, we've been approached by a lot of different groups that, you know, when they first talked to us, would we do year-round, would we do public leases that potentially would be funds available to the town to buy or, that type of thing. We're not looking for, you know, the town, fund our construction or anything else, we're just looking for the fair market value, if you want us to take that land and put it in conservation.
If we can't agree on the fair market value, how will we establish?
Normally what happens in that process is that we would agree on an appraiser and we would go out for an appraisal. If there's a challenge to value, whether it came back, if it came back and the town didn't like it, then we go to a second appraiser and we try to figure it out. But there's enough history of what land is sold for. And bought, having touched on open space, and I don't believe we would be at a market.
This is me, appears to take us beyond the appeal period for a suit that I know was, I think I would prefer to give it, I would prefer to do anything that inspired, must the firm have inspired, and I'm not sure how this document, this is to, our decision, maybe a binding document between you and the town.
I believe you, two pretty good guys here and experienced one on your board, I think they could craft the condition that the law had to work. It's basically giving you the ability to explore the option and to go to Plan B.
But is it?
I believe it is. I believe it is. I believe it's a reasonable condition if both parties are acceptable to it, if it was, I think that would be the key element.
Thank you.
Did you get a copy of this?
Yep. Okay. Any other follow-up questions? Any other presentation? Public comment then.
Good afternoon, members of the board, Dennis Murphy from Hill Law. As I promised the last few times, I actually brought my comments in writing, so you don't have to take notes. I apologize, I didn't submit them in advance. I just finished a two-week trial yesterday, so let me just pick up where this just left My comments were based on the old proposal and you're in a situation where you're being asked to evaluate two things. And I can say, I think for most of the folks in this room, they're grateful to have Plan B on the table. And this is clearly a step in the right direction, both for the neighbors, for the environment, for the whole town of Falmouth. I hope the details can be worked out. And I think that my sense of the tenor of the room tonight is different. It doesn't feel like a threat as much as it has when I've been in this room in prior meetings. This feels like an honest appeal to the board's discretion. And I want to respond in kind and make the same kind of conciliatory gesture. Again, a lot of it depends on the details to be worked out. So let me start, I want to just make three quick points. Plan B solves what I see to be one of the biggest legal challenges to this project, which is segmentation. That is that you have common ownership of a site that you're looking to develop and not disclose what the development is on the remaining portion. That was one of the very first comments from your peer reviewer about what was gonna happen there. I think we just heard moments ago that the plan was either to develop or sell the rest of the lot. It solves the problem when you use the entire site, because then you're not segmenting it. And it actually solves a lot of the neighborhood and environmental problems because the impact of the project is further away from the residential butters, the impact of the stormwater and wastewater is further from the watershed, there is just more land available for both buffer and infiltration and the preservation of eight acres of what is wooded habitat, I think is gonna be welcomed by, you know, all the environmental types. So that, I think, is a very good step in the right direction. I'm not involved in the transaction, but I will tell you that there already is some math in terms of what the fair market value is. There's a purchase and sale agreement for 1.85 for 34 and a half acres. By my math, that's $53,623 an acre, times eight, you can do the math on what they're paying for this land. I will point out, having reviewed the P N S before tonight, I don't see that it is assignable in a piecemeal way. There is an assignability clause in the P N S, but you'd have to assign the entire thing, not just eight acres. So I think there are issues to work out legally. And, you know, that brings me to the point I hinted at last time that I want to develop a little more tonight, which is, I believe your power as a board is not restricted to accepting an option. You actually have the ability to condition your approval on eight acres of open space. And here's the value proposition. In exchange for a permit where you're gonna allow five, five-story buildings, twice the height that is allowed, eight times the density that is allowed in this district, you're asking for less than a quarter of the overall site to be preserved in open space. The legal mechanism for doing that is well-established. There are cases on Nantucket, there are other cases on the Cape, there are cases in 40B where a board conditions a 40B project on approval of open space, and it can be different ways of restricting it, it can be a restrictive covenant, it could be a C R, a conservation restriction, if that were the case. So my first major point is that you don't have to rely on, as Jerry questioned, you know, things that are beyond the board's control, what the, what town meeting might decide, what the select board might decide. You actually could decide, we're gonna give you Plan B, you get all five buildings, all 300 units, but you gotta give us the eight acres. You don't have to actually title it to us, you just have to put a restriction on it, that's all. There's precedent for that. The second point I wanted to make goes back to Plan A, and again, I wanted to lead in the same tone that others were. So I wrote this letter before I saw this proposal, so take it with a grain of salt. I have a real problem with blanket waivers. And the reason is because you're being asked to fly blindly, you're being asked to exercise your discretion without knowing what the practical consequence is. And I'll give you just a few examples. There's a provision in both the subdivision regs as well as in your zoning bylaw for the C P O D, the coastal pond overlay district, that requires an environmental impact assessment. Things like, without getting into too much fine detail, the nutrient loading, the ecological impact, sewage, drainage, et cetera. And these are things that are gonna have to be worked out for any development of any size. The trigger is five lots, and don't be misled by the word lot. When these regulations were read, were written, lots were the way we thought about density at scale. So the fact that there isn't a subdivision doesn't mean you shouldn't do a environmental impact. I think your own select board characterized this as the largest residential development project in the history of Falmouth. So if you have this bylaw, it clearly applies to this project. Another blanket waiver, so I covered two at once. That is essentially the same rules in two different places, in zoning, under the coastal overlay protection district, and in the subdivision rules, there's a similar, and I cite the specific provisions in my letter. The others are also blanket waivers. I was actually a tree guy, a licensed arborist in Maine before I was a lawyer. I still, it bothers me to this day, I almost had to take a tree down on my own property. I ended up cabling it over the weekend instead. That's one tree, cost me the whole weekend to save that one tree. This is 13 acres of clear cut that's been proposed. It may be reduced with Plan B, which I appreciate because, but under Plan A, that's a major cut. I didn't do, arborists do a calculation, four and a half feet up, D B H, and you do, literally it's called acre board feet, and I haven't done anything like that. But we're talking about thousands of trees, thousands of trees. You have a bylaw and a rule that says trees over four caliper inches, that's the girth at four and a half feet up, that those have to be marked in the field, they have to be cataloged, you gotta figure out, there are certain things, and they want waivers from all of that, so that they don't even have to tell you what they're gonna do. And that's the thing that I suggest is a blanket waiver, you not, if you're gonna authorize the clear cutting of, you know, thousands of trees, you ought to know what you're doing. Another one like that is stormwater. And you have a pretty robust set of local stormwater management provisions. I know this because your own D P W or maybe it was somebody else, but one of the town officials wrote a letter and said, hey, don't do this, they have to apply under the local stormwater because we have our M S four permit. That's the permit that the town gets from the U S Environmental Protection Agency. And a condition of that is compliance with your local stormwater. And the good news about this site, I think there's three things. One is, I happen to trust Cordero, the engineer, he seems like a straight shooter to me. I also think that you have no topography challenges, there isn't ledge, you've got good soils. And third is, you got lots of space. So I think that you probably can fit the stormwater system on the site, but, and they may need, they may well need some waiver, and if there is one or two or three in particular, let them tell you what it is, don't just throw the whole thing out. That's, you know, that's my advice there. My last point is a small one that just came up today. S T R, short-term rental, is becoming a bigger thing and in other places, I know on the Cape, even on the islands, I just wanted to alert you, I don't, I'm not gonna take a position on this, but I happen to know quite a bit about it. There's a case from Attorney Duffy's time, I believe, as town council, that went to the H A C where S T R exclusion was actually litigated. And I'll just suggest that you take a look at that Falmouth hospitality case, because S T Rs in a comprehensive permit were actually talked about in that case. So before you do on anything, anything on S T R, you might take a look at it. Thank you all very much.
Thank you. (applause)
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. First of all, my name is Matthew Hanley from Thomas Leonard's Road. I want to thank this board for this hearing. I want to thank this board for this hearing. The, the transparency and the openness of this hearing has been amazing. It's been... But it's not only that, I want to also thank the neighbors. Everyone here has made educated and very informed comments. You didn't, we didn't hear a lot of repetitive comments about what, oh, you know, that are superficial. People actually made legal arguments. That is amazing. That is, you know, truly inspiring. I wish our, I wish our students were here on the back of the room to see these, these hearings. I also want, but I also, because of this hearing, and because the, the residents were allowed to speak openly and freely, it actually changed the plans. You know, it forced the petitioner to make concessions that he normally wouldn't have made. This is, that's the importance of an open hearing, a public hearing. And, you know, we've seen the plan change dramatically because of the comments of the butters here, and because of this meeting. You know, this, this new drawing is much more palatable and more conscientious of, of their butters. It's truly inspiring. You know, the one thing I will say is, you know, be very cautious about what we're voting on. It needs to be put in writing very specifically. You know, you know, the, the petitioner's been very generous, and changing his setbacks and stuff like that, but no one here wants to see a bait and switch, where these drawings go out of Falmouth, and then it wasn't specifically put in the approved plans from this board, what was agreed upon. I, there can't be any wiggle room in these regulations and, and the specifications about what this board wants to see. As far as the, this, you know, setback with the land purchase, we really should look at this, this parcel as a cluster development. The buildings are clustered tight together. You, if any other petitioner came in front of the ZBA, or the planning board, or the Board of Selectmen, there would have to be a certain amount of green space for each zoning in the town of Falmouth. You know, for them to sell that parcel, to sell that green space, I think every developer in Falmouth would love to sell their green space, you know, for, to reacoup their funds. But the, the reason these green spaces are put on is for protection of the wildlife, protection of our coastal waters, protection of, you know, our sensitive areas like the Coonamasa River. You know, this, this petitioner's action for a lot of waivers, you know, for this development. And if this development's going to be respectful of their butters and respectful of Falmouth, they need to retain that land. That, that land would be, would be a buffer, it would be a setback that would be established for any cluster development in this town. And, you know, so, you know, there's enough meat on the bone. My friend works for a developer very similar to this, 500 units in North Attleboro, and she does all the books for that unit, for that project. They clear $500,000 a month after they pay for maintenance, after they pay for everything. $500,000 a month. So there's plenty of meat on the bone for this developer to, to be able to make some concessions for the neighbors. If this truly is an affordable housing project, it shouldn't be affecting the affordability of Falmouth. You know, that money, that one, whatever they're asking for this piece of land, is coming from somewhere. It's coming from the taxpayers. In addition to that, what, there should be discussions between the town and this developer about the wastewater. Wastewater's not being discussed in enough specific information to, to relieve our doubt as, as residents' town. There's a lot of questions. What's that, what's the impact of that? But also, to be fair, Amy Lowell, wastewater superintendent, wasn't truthfully, wasn't truthful with the, the neighbors here, and wasn't truthful with this board. So when the petitioner said, well, you're going to have a forest main within half a mile of this project, that's absolutely true. The town is currently planning a project to have a forest main go right within a half mile at the intersection of Blacksmith Shop Road. So this project could be absorbed into the next phase of sewer. Also, as an added benefit, the, I've actually proposed this to the Board of Selectmen before the last town meeting, because there's going to be a significant, significant expense for this developer to build a, a standalone self, you know, sewage treatment plant. If he was to relinquish those funds for the development to be tied into Falmouth Sewer, that would be an added benefit to the taxpayer of Falmouth, and make Falmouth a more affordable place to live. Now, I know Amy Lowell and, you know, the town's going to say, well, we don't have enough capacity. Well, the last phase of sewer, they have, they had it extra capacity, but we put Springs Bars Road on that, we put the extra steamship authority ships on that, we've put extra hookups since that project was developed, without, without squabbling about it, it was just approved blindly. So, you know, there has to be give and take in every project. I feel like this petitioner, you know, has listened to the butters and made some, you know, concessions, now it's time the town of Falmouth to make some concessions for their butters, because they don't want to have a waste treatment plant in their backyard. I know, because I have one in my backyard. And so it's, let's, let's get rid of some of these red flags and some of these big hurdles by getting rid of this sewage treatment plant, and then having them absorb this green space. Thank you very much.
You're up next, Ralph. You're on deck, Ralph. It's Mr. Brown's first.
Oh, sorry.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Hi, Douglas Brown, Old Main Road. I'm a member of the Select Board, and as, as such, I bring you this, which was addressed to the Select Board, we received it today. This is from Ivan Vayella from the Marine Biological Ecosystem Center. And he says, "Dear Select Board, dear members, I understand that Saxon Partners proposed to build a 300-unit housing development at 375 Sandwich Road. Their plans call for clear cutting an old-growth forested area in close proximity to the Coonamasa Greenway, an area that includes key wildlife habitats that are rapidly diminishing in our town. Eastern box turtle is one of the many species likely to be affected by such plants, and a species of special conservation concern in Massachusetts, according to the National Heritage of Endangered Species Program, Mass. Division of Fisheries and Wildlife. It's considered endangered in Maine and other states. Eastern box turtles are threatened by loss of habitat owing to land development, mowing of habitats essential for food and laying eggs, increased predation, and other factors. In response to public comments about threats to turtles in the area that is being proposed for the development, Saxon Partners representatives say that their workers will keep an eye out for turtles during construction and relocate any turtles encountered. I fear that these actions will not be effective. First, in regard to detection, box turtles are small, slow-moving, and cryptically colored, so they're rather inconspicuous, even to experienced observers. I have been observing box turtles in my property in North Falmouth for half a century, but just last week, as I was mowing a weedy patch, I almost ran a small bushloe mower over a box turtle. I'm afraid that untrained driver of a major construction vehicle would have minimal chance of effectively detecting box turtles in their path. Second, in regard to relocation, box turtles live their long 50-year life or more, lives currently entirely within remarkably small patches of suitable habitat, about 250 square yards. In the back of our property in North Falmouth, we have had the same three identifiable box turtles live and reproduce for 50-plus years, all within an area about half, about the size of a basketball court. Wild Care of Cape Cod in Eastham, Mass. reports that box turtles removed from their tiny home territory will try endlessly to return to their original location, efforts that involve high risks over roads, exposure to predators, lack of food and cover, and other dangers. Relocation of box turtles is therefore not a good and effective conservation practice. If we intend, if we indeed accept the notion of species conservation is sufficiently important principle, the best tool to ensure continuing wildlife presence in Cape Cod and elsewhere is to protect suitable habitats. Sincerely, Ivan Vayella, Marine Biological Laboratory." So I would just say also that I appreciate the applicants changing the plans. Surprisingly, the revised plan looks very much like the request that the Select Board sent in a letter about six months ago, asking that the project be moved out of the woodland, provide a habitat corridor for wildlife to transfer through the property. So on the environmental side, I think Plan B is good. I think that you've removed a lot of the legal challenges if you stay with that plan, and I hope you guys are willing to do that as part of your project. I don't see how it's practical to expect someone else to intervene to purchase that property, so I hope you guys will just do the right thing. Thank you.
Good evening, Ralph Herbst, Precinct 8. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'd like to ask the Chair, have, has the Zoning Board of Appeals Board visited the site?
Yes, we have.
Thank you. Is the wastewater plan considered an IA system?
It's a local, onsite septic sewer system, essentially. It's not considered an IA system.
It's not, it doesn't fall under the definition of an IA system?
No.
That's too bad. Has the applicant...
I'm going to defer the, the answer to that to the applicant. I'm not going to make, I'm not qualified to make an explanation.
I can't speak to the applicant, I have to speak to you.
I understand that, and I don't want to give bad information to you or the audience, sir.
Can you ask the applicant whether or not the IA, it's an IA system?
I will be happy to ask the applicant that.
As we've explained, it is well beyond what is an IA system. It's many, much more rigorous analysis and permitting requirements. It, I don't, I'm not going to say that I know whether the Title V IA innovative system carries over to the groundwater discharge permit regulations. I don't know. But it's immaterial, because this is not a Title V system, it is a highly regulated and reviewed by DEP private wastewater treatment plant that requires a groundwater discharge permit, not a Title V permit. So it's going to be certainly equally, and frankly, much more effective than an IA system, which of course, by definition, is not designed for systems over 10,000 gallons per day.
Thank you, Mr. Frehler.
Thank you. Is the Zoning Board familiar with zero scape? Instead of lawns, grass lawns, zero scape could be defined as what's in front of Town Hall. Are you familiar with that?
Familiar with the concept, I'll defer to all the members of the board.
Okay. I, I'm just wondering if the applicant has considered that instead of green grass lawns? Could you ask them if they have? Well, I, I do, I do recommend that, that the Zoning Board consider that as a requirement for the, for the applicant to provide zero scape, which basically says, no fertilizer, you don't have to water it, and it's most, most more, and much more environmentally friendly. By the way, I wanted to congratulate you on your decision last week about the decision on Main Street. I would like to restate something I said before, just to remind the board about what the local comprehensive plan says about housing. And it's, it's the crux of my opposition to this, this development. It says that the, the historical depth provided, in part by the charm that draws people to live in the town of Falmouth, providing the future housing needs, which we have, should not, N-O-T, negate that which makes Falmouth an exceptional place to live. This development changes the character of Falmouth from a coastal, little quaint village into something that's much, much more appropriate for a development outside of Boston. Thank you. I would like to just remind the board that there is a, another development coming in town for affordable housing, and it's not by some outside developer trying to jam something down our throats. It's a, it's a development on Main Street, on the sewer. They've gone to the Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund for funding. It's got 15 apartments, and 11 of the units will be de-restricted. This is the way Falmouth has been approaching its affordable housing situation. Remember that we have three entities in our town, which I can't think any other town on, on Cape Cod has. We have the Falmouth Housing Corporation, the Falmouth Housing Trust, Habitat for Humanity, and also individual developers such as this. We don't need somebody coming in from the outside of our town telling us how to deal with our affordable housing issues. We're totally, we're totally capable of doing it ourselves. And we have, we have a great history of developing affordable housing, going back to Bob Murray, who developed and started the Falmouth Housing Corporation, a man who used to walk annually from Provincetown to Woods Hole to bring forth the necessity of affordable housing here in our town. That's a, an unbelievable example of the type of people we have in this town who care about affordable housing. We don't need people coming in from the outside of our town to tell us what to do about affordable housing. They are in this for one thing and one thing only, and that is for profit. So I highly recommend that you consider what I, what I just said about, about the fact that affordable housing should not change the character of our town, and this project would. Thank you very much.
Good evening, Kathleen Crowley-Bravo, 63 Deepwood Drive. When I first spoke the very first night, I was really concerned that Mayor's Pond Well wasn't being discussed, that Mayor's Pond wasn't being discussed, that Jenkins Pond wasn't being discussed. I don't know if you can put up the picture of the Plan B, if that's possible, please? But I would like to alert the Zoning Board of something that they need to be more aware of before a decision is made.
All out?
No? Okay, thank you. Well, if you can put back in your memory where the road was on Sandwich Road 375, where the driveway enters, if you look at that entrance at 375, you walk across the street, and let's pretend the clock on the wall, that would be this. This is Mayor's Pond Well. This is a source of our public drinking water in Falmouth, Massachusetts. I don't know about you, but I like to drink clean water. About Mayor's Pond Well and Spectacle Pond Reservation, I'd like to read this. This is directly from the 300 Committee. Between 1986 and 2002, the town of Falmouth acquired 13 parcels of undeveloped land and three pond areas of hatchfield to protect the Mayor's Pond Municipal Well. Combined, they formed the 152-acre Mayor's Pond Reservation with frontage, with frontage on Dare Pond, Mayor's Pond, and Spectacle Pond. Mayor's Pond, and Spectacle Pond. The well site is right in the middle of the reservation. By protecting the drinking water source, the town has also protected a hiking area and many acres of habitat for birds and other wildlife. Access to the network of wooded trails at Mayor's Pond is on Pinecrest Beach Drive off Deepwood Drive from Sandwich Road. There is a grassy area for a few cars on the south side of Pinecrest Beach, just northwest of the dirt road, usually created that leads to the water tower. The reservation occupies the gently rolling outwash plain of central Falmouth with none of the large rocks or rock walls so common to the marine in North and West Falmouth. The area is well wooded, et cetera, et cetera. That's from the 300 Committee. This is from the town of Falmouth. From the town of Falmouth, draft comprehensive wastewater management plan and draft environment impact. Public water supplies, as discussed in Chapter 4 of the NRA, approximately 90% of Falmouth is serviced by public water, which comes from Sagamore Lens. Residents in the remains of the planning area also receive drinking water from Sagamore Lens. There are currently five groundwater source wells in Falmouth: Fresh Pond Well, Coonamessett Well, Mayor's Pond Well, Crooked Pond Well, and Asshumet Well. Of these only, the Asshumet Well is currently inactive. These five active wells account for 40% of our drinking water. Forty percent. The Coonamessett, Mayor's Pond, and Crooked Pond Wells are located... The Great Pond Watershed, the Asshumet Well, is located in the Waco East Watershed, and the Fresh Pond Well is located outside the planning area. In addition, the town water receives drinking water approximately 10% of its total use from the Upper Cape Water Supply Cooperative located at the MMR. And I did the math. Now, Mayor's Pond, not the well, Mayor's Pond is 4,224 feet from 375 Sandwich Road. 0.8 miles, that's the pond, not the well. The well is across the street. Literally, I could walk from here to where the pickleball court is, and that's where the well is. That's very close to that wastewater treatment facility. That really concerns me about our drinking water. We saw what happened at Auto Camp and the mess that that has caused at the community. I mean, that is really bad. Can you imagine that affecting the neighborhood of Jenkins Pond and Mayor's Pond Well? And the fact that the 300 Committee was so thoughtful in putting all of that land into conservation because they thought it was an important thing to do for the sake of our drinking water? I just think that this is a very profound statement here, and I am not an ecologist by any means, but I looked this up on the Massachusetts State Law for large systems. Now, I know that Mayor's Pond Well is further than 200 to 400 feet, I understand that. But, if you read through this whole thing, if the large system is located within 400 feet of a surface drinking water supply, 200 feet of a tributary to a surface drinking water supply, or, or, within a nitrogen-sensitive area, interim wellhead protection area, or IWPA, or a map zone 2 of a public water supply of a public water supply, the well system is then failed. What more do you need? You're going to allow this development to contaminate our drinking water for the generations to come? This does not belong in this neighborhood. I'm all for affordable housing, but please save Sandwich Road now.
Good evening, my name is Keith Black here, Treetop Lane. I'm actually speaking on behalf of my aunt Fran Chivari from Meredith Drive. She asked me to read a letter to the zoning board. So, "Dearest Falmouth Zoning Board Appeals, I'm writing this letter in opposition to the 375 Sandwich Road proposed mega apartment complex development. The 375 Road neighborhoods are already well-established residential communities. Now we have a developer wanting to make a killing in the market by maneuvering and misusing the 40B housing goal to gain greater personal profit and to get around zoning regulations that protect these existing neighborhoods in the surrounding 375 Sandwich Road. What we have learned in this case is that developers can make greater profit by buying property and building in residential neighborhoods than in commercial areas that are closer to amenities that are needed, such as sewage in a 40B project, which land is generally more costly. Developers can make even greater profit by buying and developing property in lower-priced residential neighborhoods rather than higher-priced residential neighborhoods. Those market-based concepts certainly are clear in this evolving scheme. Developers can make larger profits by building more units, perhaps three units, rather than a smaller development that may be more appropriate for a Cape Cod tourist town such as Falmouth. Developers make even larger profits by building and marketing higher-priced housing units that the town doesn't really need rather than building more modestly-priced housing that the Falmouth workforce can afford and really does need. In this situation, the developer, clearly in the name of profit, will be highly restricting the residential neighborhoods surrounding the 375 Sandwich Road development by creating their proposed city in the middle of a residential neighborhood of farmland and relatively modest, single-family homes. In the name of profit, they will be killing the existing community and replacing it with theirs that the basis of our workforce can't afford. Now, in the name of profit and by misusing the 40B, developers are allowed to kill these existing established, lower to moderate income neighborhoods and repopulate them with wealthier off-Cape renters, providing no benefit to the less wealthy Falmouth employees. Perhaps we should call this mistake as the onset of destruction of Falmouth's workforce-affordable housing neighborhoods, or just the destruction of Cape Cod as we know it. Local Falmouth workers need good neighborhoods to live in and to raise their families, and Falmouth needs these workers to keep the town running properly. This development lacks the value, lacks value to Falmouth and to Cape Cod, and clearly will pollute the water source, the environment. Fifty feet is about the length of this stage. It's a short stone's throw between, you know, their developed property and the, all of the houses on Meredith Drive. And it has to be minimally, it has to be cut down to allow for access to that conservation land if they sell it, and to provide that berm that, you know, will, will block the headlights, but not much else. It's not appropriate for Cape Cod at all. Thank you.
I'm just going to ask if people might want to queue up just to get in the line. It will just cut down on downtime.
Good evening, Board. Robert Dugan, Falmouth Heights. I was a long-serving member on this board as the clerk, so I'm very familiar with comprehensive permits. I'm also a professional realtor in the Falmouth area, so I'm very familiar with fair market value. I'm very concerned at this last-ditch effort on this Plan B, which seems to be dangling a carrot on unknowns. You know, it's the board members here that are tasked by the town to deal with decisions on 40B comprehensive permits. It's not something that should be left to be tasked to the administrator of the board. It's the board members themselves that have to come to the decisions. In order to do that, you have to have full vetting of the project. There's been absolutely no vetting of Plan B. The only vetting has been from somewhere outside this board that has nothing to do with the decision. I'm a town meeting member. I know what the process is on financing and coming to town meeting to get, to get monies for town purchases. From what I can see on Plan B, it's landlocked parcel. There is no access. The only access on that eight-acre parcel is from the development itself. Also, it's in the undisturbed buffer that was proposed. If the town is going to purchase it, it has to have some kind of passive recreation to it. It also has no link to the Coonamessett River. The project moving towards the middle of the, of the plan, I think, is a better project, but there are properties that are now closer to the development that weren't closer in the first place, on the bottom left of the plan. You are also dealing, that was set previously in the Coastal Pond Overlay District. Your timing issue is that you have to close this hearing tonight. Unless the applicant decides they want to give an extension, your decision to close the hearing has to be tonight. And the only, the only project that you've had time to vet is the original Plan A. And that's what the board should focus on, is Plan A. If your decision comes on Plan A, and at some point the developer wants to suggest the change, they can always apply for a change, substantial, insubstantial, and again, it would have to go in front of the board. But moving a project like this so much forward is not an insubstantial change. You have no engineering. You have no water calculations. The roadways have changed. It's a completely different plan. If, if, like Mr. Murphy said, you could decide on Plan A, that you decide you want to have acreage put aside for open space, that would be your right if you want to put that into a decision. But to talk so much about Plan B with the town, with so many unknowns and on financing, and as far as fair market value, if that property is now landlocked, you've reduced the value of the property. If you can't use it for recreation, you've reduced it. It appears what you'd have to do to get value for the developer is basically purchase their development rights for the property. Town hasn't done that before that I'm aware of. But you have to prove all that in appraisals with the town. There's a specific, you know, process that you have to go through. So I would hope that the board would focus right now on the project that's before you, which was Plan A, and get any questions they have left on Plan A taken care of this evening, so that when you go into deliberations, you know exactly you have the information that you want to. Once the project is closed, the file is closed. I'm just, I'm very worried about this Plan B option taking the focus off of everything else. The developer at a future time wants to come back, they can do that, but now's not the time to discuss Plan B.
First of all, I really appreciate your statements. Thank you, sir. Toni Lewandowski, 363 Sandwich Road, 26-year resident there. Very familiar with the space. I know you've heard from me before, but I just still want to also implore upon the board that back in 2016, we were concerned about a 20-plus-unit cluster home because of all the nitrogen load, the environmental impacts, wildlife corridors, and so forth. They still exist. With a 300-unit cluster, that's still, that presents even more of a problem. Having looked at Plan A, B, C, D, whatever, every time I see one of these meetings, EBA meetings, there's a new, a new plan on board. It's not really fair to you to be able to articulate what's going on and be able to actually make decisions upon those things. Runoff does change. I'm looking at, last night I was studying the last rendition. Of course, tonight's is another one. Very concerned about the retention pond, that was never brought up before. It should be an infusion system, it's not. So that's a concern. I know there's safety concerns for, for children and so forth, too, but also just looking just at the biology of it in addition to that. The way the road was constructed, now it's, it's more light issues. It's a lot of problems in regard to that. And now you also have nitrogen-sensitive areas that are, were the original actual areas of concern where there were kettle holes. Now they want to put this leach field on top of that, which is a mowed, flat, nothing monoculture area that now you're going to have to clearcut that space as well. So that's another thought that has a generator and has, I was, you know, scents, we'll leave it at that, and sounds, that's going to affect, yes, it's going to affect my space because I'm going to be even closer to this at that point. But I don't care if it's where it is now, whether it was on Plan A, B, C, D, the whole entire project, in my opinion, is not in the light of Falmouth. It's just not. You know, you can put 300 units 100 yards to the left or 100 yards to the right, and I'm telling you, as a wildlife corridor, that doesn't mean a bloody difference. And it's not going to make a difference for the nitrogen load, it's not going to, especially with retention ponds, now you're dealing with all the, all of the runoff from the asphalt. You know what comes off of asphalt? I've done research on this from, from multiple countries. And you're going to have an absolute disaster for our watershed. And I know it's going to end up in our ponds further south because that's the way everything in this town runs. I'm going to be kind, but have a little sense of humor. But, but in all, you know, look at, I looked at different building programs or ideas that did happen in Falmouth. And I was trying to look at something that really did offer, in our general area, that offered something that was still a wildlife corridor, that still offered, you know, our nitrogen load issues and so forth. And I looked at Chillmark, and I'm going to be honest, if you actually take an overlay of this space that we're looking at here, and overlay it there, you would actually see a very interesting, you know, roads-type of structure, housing structure, it's on that, you know, the wheel, I call those, you know, the wagon wheel kind of bases. And that's a little bit more comprehensive and thoughtful about what really happens in a space like that. As the gentleman before me stated, when he, you know, he was saying, you have this, this space that 300 cover, whoever our town purchases for this wild, you know, conservation area, it really doesn't help anybody other than the developer. It really doesn't do, I mean, a couple of smaller spaced critters, if you will, but it doesn't have, it does not help that east-west corridor, which is what we need. If you're looking at the entire space of Falmouth, we don't have that east-west, going from Coonamessett to some of the other open spaces that are on the west. The north, the north-south, you're cutting it off absolutely right there. And, and that's troublesome. Excuse me, and a 50-foot buffer, I mean, it is kind of ludicrous. So I'm not even going to go into details on that because it's the width of a driveway. The driveway that was, you know, proposed and all of the light, I looked at the comments that were made in regard to even dealing with all the light issues, and that is not going to be solved. You can tell me all day long, but wildlife does not prefer, nor do any of our residents prefer, to have these giants, you know, lights, be they from, you know, a vehicle or just from, you know, the housing units and, of course, the giant areas for parking. That is going to, you need a full environmental review. It's really been interesting because I have had the opportunity, thankfully, to walk the perimeter of my property and neighbors that abut this space, and I have seen everything from box turtles to lady flippers to this and that, that, you know, of course, didn't exist in the middle of December for obvious reasons. But it's true, a lot of these creatures are very somatic to that, that space and that area. And I think that with us putting these giant lawns, concrete homes, I mean, four-story plus five-story buildings is just absolutely ludicrous to, to me, being a Falmouth resident for as long as I have been. It does not encapsulate what our town is. We're supposed to be, we don't want to turn into an out-of-borough. We don't want to turn into, you know, a big city. I mean, that's what we want to be. Yes, it's going to be difficult in some ways. I think affordable housing, of course, I'm for, who would be against that? And I think that our town does a phenomenal job in trying to work, like on the Main Street project and other projects, and there are many others that fall under that umbrella as well, that are still working for that. And, you know, who's going to, I'm looking at these, who's going to test? Who's going to make these tests? Blowers are blowing affluent from various, we'll call, you know, tanks underground. Who's going to be monitoring that sound, that scent? You know, it's, I have agricultural land. I bought agricultural land here for a purpose. I like to work my land agriculturally. I have critters, I have a little farmette. I work as a scientist, but I still enjoy having my getaway place. And now it's, and I do not live- And now it's, and I do not live in, in a, um, higher income, and I have a modest home, as it was referred to, and that's funny, that's, that's how I wish to live. Um, looking at the snow management, maybe with climate warming, that won't be as much of an issue. However, um, just being commonsensical, when you do start scraping this stuff down, you're going to bring all of the issues that, that are on top of, um, those asphalt driveways, you know, all of the, the, the car debris, oils and so forth that are going to end up in that space. What's going to be taken care about that? Who's going to be monitoring this constantly? These are just, you know, the, the nitrogen load just absolutely boggles my mind that when we had 10% of the housing request in 2016 negated because of that, why would we allow something that's, you know, 300, um, units? So that's my overall, um, bid to you, and I, and I really, uh, wish that nothing really actually occurs on this, on this property. I'm going to be very honest about that currently because you don't have enough information. Without a full environmental, um, you know, review, what is sustainable? The whole word is sustainable. What is sustainable for our town? What is sustainable for the environment that we live in? Thank you very much.
I apologize, I came up earlier. I don't want to take anyone's time away. Uh, I just had a legal question for town, for the special counsel. What is the procedure for once these setbacks are set for this project? Can the, can that project developer come back and infringe on those buffers? Can you, can you tell me legally?
Pretty helpful. Yeah. If there was a permit, if there was an approval with conditions, it would be enforceable in the permit conditions. So in other words, you can't encroach on setbacks that are set forth in the permit. It would be an enforcement issue.
Okay. It, just because there has been so many setbacks proposed, I think, you know, all of us are a little confused about what, what you will be voting on today. And, you know, you know, I think everyone here wants clarity. They want to know exactly what's being voted on, what this project's going to look like in their backyard. And they want to know that down the road, because profit, you know, money speaks volumes. And when, when a developer can, can save some money, or, you know, they come in, they're like, oh, you didn't specify, we're going to put those garages in that we wanted to put in. You know, we're going to infringe on that buffer. Now that we have our big project, we got our toe in the door, you know, now we're going to, we're going to do what we want. We're going to come back and infringe on that buffer. You know, I think, I think everyone here wants to know exactly what's being voted on, what this is going to look like if it does go forward. And I think it's best for everyone as far as transparency. So thank you very much.
Good evening. Virginia Rabiesa, 502 Sandwich Road, 40-year resident this year. First, I want to compliment this board. Um, I think I mentioned before, I had had experience, um, as a treasurer for the Save Little Pond Group when there was another 40B development that was going to be put on, um, Little Pond. And this board has been much more receptive to the neighbors, to the area than what I think we experienced at that time. So I want to commend you for that. Last time I spoke about, uh, when the, um, eight acres, if you will, was, was proposed, that unless a conservation restriction was put on that parcel, um, or if the town did not take ownership and put a restriction, there would potentially, you know, if, if Saxon Partners still owned it, there would be potential development. I was, I was approached by a member saying that I was wrong in that and that a restriction can be put on it as part of your conditions. However, unless those conditions make that a conservation restriction, they still have ownership. And I bring to, and brought to my mind a development I remember, um, I was on the planning board at, at, at one point, but this I don't think was when I was on the planning board. But I remember reading about it. There was a cluster zone development in town that had open space. It wasn't a 40B, but it allowed, the, the planning board allowed them to have a few more units on the parcel. Years down the road, they came forward and they had apparently obtained land elsewhere in the town. And they asked to have an exchange of land so that they could put additional units, um, on that parcel. So it doesn't, I don't think, unless there is some real legality to it, that if we put this restriction on it and there's no conservation restriction as a condition, there's no conservation restriction, it doesn't mean when this parcel is sold after the development is built, that an, that that owner could potentially purchase some less desirable land or whatever, but could have affordable housing or whatever, that they might come before the town for a land exchange so that they can add additional units to this property. So I just, if you are going to condition that, that land be, um, set aside as open space, please make it with the condition that it has a conservation restriction. Thank you.
Good evening. Betsy Gladfalter-Westfalmah. Uh, as you know, I'm on, I'm a, on the regulatory board also, and I would have the same confusion. We wouldn't, we wouldn't take a project where we had two different plans in front of us. We expect people to tell us what it is they want to do. But what I really want to point out is, I was at another meeting and so I came, for the last meeting. So I came sort of partway through and I came in and I sat in the back and I'm like, what's, what's that on the board? What, what plan is that? Well, I just want to point out that this new plan, this Plan B, does nothing to change the density of the project, the height of the buildings, and the nitrogen concerns. So I'd just like you to take that into consideration. When my, my understanding is, I'm a little confused with the process now, but I think what they're asking you to do is to vote on Plan A with restrictions. And if they're not opposed to the restrictions you put on, then if somehow, well, one of the restrictions should, could be, you're donating these five acres with a conservation restriction as conservation land. So it's a, it's a little confusing. And, and I give all of you, I, I, obviously I've known all of you for a long time, but I give you a lot of credit for going through this week after week. Thanks a lot.
Hi, my name is Iris Glickstein-Fox Runley. I've been part of Habitat for a while, and we just finished last September, Willet Way. I think you all know the area. We first approached for about, I think, 14 houses, and we were told no. We ended up with 10, which left an acre of land in the middle that you didn't have to pay for. It's just open space. My question is, they're talking 40B. I am here the first time, I'm a little nervous, I'm sorry, but I didn't see what you were doing for the children in the neighborhood of this development or, um, green space. I grew up in Dorchester and I know what it is to live on asphalt. I think this is terrible. It's absolutely deplorable. This is not Falmouth. This is not where we came to live 25 years ago. And I ask you not to vote for it. Plus the fact, Sandwich Road, I don't know where you all live, but it's a hell in the summer and what will it be all year round? I please think about it.
Tommy Zion, 36, Captain Bonenburger Lane. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Board Members. Three minutes, I have four points. Number one, please deny this waiver, the length of the dead-end road is three times what is allowed. 500 feet is the maximum allowed. Saxon is requesting 1,401. Number two, Saxon Partners is planning on installing an open retention pond on the 30 acres with their latest site plan. We should require Saxon to install a state-of-the-art infiltration system. My reasoning is due to climate change, we're experiencing rain events much more frequently. In September 2023, Leamster, Massachusetts, experienced catastrophic flooding, which brought 10 inches of rain in four hours. In January 2024, Plainville, Massachusetts, experienced devastating flooding with the solar farm that was built. The retention ponds that were designed to catch the water runoff at the solar farm overflowed into the basements of the neighboring homes. Similar rain events could occur in Falmouth. We need to protect our 93 abutters and adjacent homes with the best infiltration system available on the market, with added capacity to ensure no runoff. Number three, if you're considering Plan B, please deed restrict the eight and a half acres of open space. It will create an open space corridor. This will prevent any future building and protect the Habitat. If this property is resold, this deed restriction will allow open space to remain undisturbed in perpetuity. Number four, make this a condition with mass housing. We need a full environmental impact study. Lady slippers, turtles, and birds, everything is blooming and nesting right now. An environmental study should be conducted as soon as possible. To our loyal community who are here in attendance, and those viewing at home, public comment is closed after tonight, but we will still fight to stop Saxon Partners. Thank you. I will let you know what our next step is. In closing, I want to thank everyone who has sat up on this board the past six months. You've remained strong and unwavering to your community. We acknowledge all of your hard work and the difficult decisions you have in front of you. You deserve the last ovation, so let's give the ZB, the ZBA a big round of applause. Thank you, and let's stop Saxon Partners.
Hi, thank you. My name is Carrie McRae. I do live in Bourne. Um, I am a state senate candidate for the Plymouth and Barnstable District. And about six months ago, I was contacted by quite a few, um, members of this community with concerns over this project. And I will say that as I followed it, and I'm not going to reiterate everything that they've covered here tonight, I too would oppose it, and I think there's a lot of, um, problems with this project, with the, the height of the project. I don't think it's going to make a huge impact in a positive way when it comes to the workforce housing that is an issue that we need to address. I, um, I stand with the community and their opposition of this, and I will be with them, supporting them throughout, throughout the whole process. Thank you.
Sorry. Keith Blackyer, um, Tree Top Lane. Uh, I just wanted to bring up a couple, um, something, another point that I failed to mention earlier is that of the town expense to this, you know. Right now, currently, you know, post-COVID, the, you know, the hospital's overrun. I, I've worked there for, yeah, almost five years. We're talking about someone floated the idea of the town paying to expand the sewage to run to the property. You're talking about expanding the police force, the fire department, the road situation with Sandwich Road. I mean, that's a lot of public money that's going to end up coming out of this to, to support their, to support their building. And I just don't think that we need to put up that much, plus buy half their property to pay for their building on it because it doesn't make any sense.
Cheryl Lou here, 371 Seum Road. So I guess this is the end of our contribution to this conversation, but of course, not the end of our fight, but, um, I guess the last thing that I would like to say to you is, I could be wrong, of course, but I do believe that after having insisted repeatedly for month after month after month, that nothing was going to deter them from doing it exactly the way that they wanted, they suddenly had a 180 turnaround and at the last minute decided to change this. I do believe it has something to do with learning that they were actually up against people that had legal rights that they could defend. And they are now removing those sort of ability to argue those legal points by changing their plan, changing the terminology. It's not a subdivision, it's not a road, it's a driveway, and they are changing our ability to defend ourselves. But in doing so, although it does improve some of the conditions that we were so vehemently arguing against, it actually doesn't make us any less aggrieved, which is still a legal term, that, uh, we're still aggrieved. I, at 371, am still aggrieved. Because when you put that in, when you put that pavement in, I don't care if you're calling it a road or a driveway, it still aggrieves me. So I just again want to ask you to please do what you can to protect me and all the neighbors from being imposed upon. It is within your power, not ours, to, to put those restrictions in place to protect us. And again, ask that actually, if you wanted to just throw the entire thing in the trash barrel, I would applaud that as well. But, um, I want to oppose it and let you know that we're, we're going to continue fighting for our rights. Thank you.
Anyone else? Public comment? Ma'am?
Good evening. My name is Paula Yanni. I live in Tanglewood. We bought our house in 1978. I'm very nervous. Living in Falmouth, we're not exposed to what a four-story building looks like. But my husband and I were going up Route 3 the other day, and in Plymouth, there's the oasis, which is, I looked it up online, I think it said it's six buildings of four stories. It's 320 apartments. It's huge. Monstrosity doesn't do the buildings justice. I can't picture it next to my neighborhood. Driving, um, we went to Florida on vacation this year and driving around there, I, I did see buildings like that, um, complexes, but they were all in commercial areas because that's what it is. It's a commercial business for these people to make money. She can lay a leaf. Good night, everybody. Thank you for your time.
Hi, Steve Good, Precinct 6. I, I bought open space because the neighbors in the area I bought open space because the neighbors in the area all thought it was open space and it was, nobody would ever be able to build on it. I've been approached by two developers already. I have 10 acres, almost 10 acres of land. I have coyotes in my yard, deer in my yard, turkeys in my yard. They were there before I was. Why am I going to kick them out of their house? They lived there. I seen 10 coyotes go through my yard at one time. I have a lot of road frontage on my property. You don't have to go over somebody else's property. This street frontage, I have enough to build two houses on my property, small houses for somebody that could afford it that lived in the town, not a project that's four stories high. Now, if these people can't rent these out at $4,000, $3,000, $2,000, are they going to let other people come in and the government's going to pay to pay their rents or the taxpayers of Falmouth have to make up for that? I don't think that's right. I have open space. I want to keep it. I bought it so it wouldn't be turned into a 40B development. And I don't know. This is a good thing, but this is not a Falmouth project. This is a city project. They should go up to Boston. They'll let you build anything in Roxbury Dock, just a matter of time.
Mr. Chairman, Board, Peter Cooper, 102 Meredith Drive. My only question that still puzzles me is according to 40B, I can't understand why homes are not built. According to 40B, a home has to be built in adjacent homes on the streets or in the area. I can't understand. He also says, well, we're going to worry about the street lighting. What am I going to do with the second or the third floor and the fourth floor? The lights, what are they going to do? Shut off their lights at nighttime so that they don't show? And I just think that it's going to put a burden on the taxpayers with this development being put in. If he's going to do a development, he should put in homes, not apartment buildings. Thank you.
Anyone else like to make a public comment? Going once? Going twice? I must suggest we have some board discussion as to where we are. I think that's what council might be looking for at this point. Who would like to begin?
I think we generally have, no, I think we have enough information to close it. And although I think some of the obstacles of going to Plan B or Plan A are also possible depending on which way we want to go, I don't see a great deal of necessity not to close it. I guess we could reopen it if something came up under due process notification and things like that.
I don't believe we can reopen after.
No.
I thought if you went to public notice, you could.
Nope.
Oh, not on the 40B. Well, I'd still recommend closing. What do I feel about the project? I think it's approvable with conditions.
Is he talking Plan A?
Are you talking Plan A? Are you talking Plan B? What?
The whole plan.
I think Plan B with conditions. I mean, it could actually be Plan A with conditions that bring it to Plan B, but let's not beat around the bush. I think Plan B is a better project to go ahead with.
Mr. Duffy?
Well, this is comment. It's not a vote, which will come later. But when this particular application was filed and I looked at it, I had concerns from the very first day that I saw it. And my feeling was this developer can do a better job. I didn't like the plan that was filed. And as we've gone through the months, listening to the testimony of the engineers, of our referrals, our town departments, and particularly the people in the neighborhood and all of you who are here tonight, I still think that there has to be a better way to do this. And one of the thoughts that I had at the very beginning, and I developed it over the course of time, was actually reflected in so-called Plan B. I think this project should be moved to the western or the central part of this development. And that would be in keeping with the request of the Board of Selectmen at the very beginning. They sent a letter to Mass Housing saying that the project should be moved to the center portion to preserve open space and provide a better project for residents who are going to live there. Mass Housing, in its letter to, a letter of eligibility, I believe it's called, said that they suggested the applicant be prepared to address this issue that was raised by the Board of Selectmen. Well, they did, but it took them till last month to do it, five months without doing it. Then the Cape Cod Commission also, in its referral, suggested that the property, that the project be moved to the center and that there be open space. There's also been some comment from various people who spoke here tonight. Mr. Handley was one, and I think somebody else made the comment. We have a provision in our zoning bylaw known as the planned unit development where a developer could come in and ask for greater density for residential units in return for providing open space for the residents of the development. We've had experience doing this, and I think we should look to our zoning bylaw and apply that principle to this particular development and require that there be some open space in return for the density that's being proposed. Now, this open space, in my view, should be for the benefit of the residents, not necessarily the community as a whole, because we have no access to it. But the residents can certainly use it for open space purposes or passive recreation or anything else. I think it's very important that this project be what I consider to be livable, and open space would go a long way to make it livable rather than the monolithic project that seems to be proposed. We also have to take into consideration that opening up the eastern side of the project will be of benefit to the Coonamessett River and the Great Pond watershed. We spent a great deal of money improving the Coonamessett River. We spent a great deal of money on the sewer system for the Great Pond watershed area. We have to take that into consideration, and we have to protect that, and we have to protect the investment that has been made there. There's a wastewater treatment plant proposed for this property. I understand that the Mass DEP has the sole authority to approve it, but nevertheless, that does not mean that the Town of Falmouth should not take a position on this wastewater treatment plant. Amy Law, when she was here, told us that the town at its wastewater treatment plant on Blacksmith Shop Road is held to a standard of three milligrams per liter of nitrogen. Given the sensitivity of this area, I think that if this project is going to be approved, there should be a condition in it that tells Mass DEP, we want the developer to be held to the same standard as the Town of Falmouth is in its treatment of wastewater and the three milligrams per liter. We should also consider what kind of offsets can be made to this project to, again, address the issue of nitrogen, such as no fertilizer, irrigation issues, and also, this ties into the original comment about open space, leaving as much vegetation and natural space as possible on this project. Now, we also got a letter of referral from the Planning Board on this project, and they mentioned this as a concern too, that we should maintain as much tree cover as possible and have as much vegetative buffer as possible for this project. Couple of other thoughts. I think there should be a consideration of a broader range of income on the affordable units and also a reconsideration of the market rate units because to me, it looks like they're pricing a lot of people out of possible tenancy in this project. We need affordable housing, but we need it for a whole range of people making different incomes, not just a few, which seems to be headed that way. I think we should strictly enforce our stormwater regulations, rules and regulations, and we should also consider our environmental issues. There have been a number of them addressed here. The issue of clearcutting should be regulated. The protection plan that was proposed by the Goddard, in the Goddard letter for the protection of box turtles should be reviewed and perhaps incorporated into any decision. And we should also consider screening this property as much as we can with the berms and the 50-foot buffer. Finally, I think the driveway, it's now a driveway. I also think that there should be one lot, not two, one lot, doesn't need a roadway anymore, doesn't need subdivision approval, but the driveway should be as direct as possible to the project.
Mark?
There's a lot I don't like about this. I think we all agree on that, or the most of us. But my largest concern has always been Sandwich Road and what this project will contribute to Sandwich Road. This weekend marked Memorial Day, and I'm sure that at least half of you people were at some point during the weekend around the end of Sandwich Road where it meets Route It's already at capacity. You know, the standard is it's a TOF, which is the busiest, most congested. If it went up to J, I mean, it would probably be a TOJ. It's a, all of 28 is a problem. We've had, we've spent lots of time on potential redevelopment of, redesigning Route 28. Again, you know, we have the county's assessment of all the roads on Cape Cod, and there was a reporter from the Cape Cod Times who took those figures and plotted them out, and we find out that Sandwich Road and 28 is smack dab in the most dangerous stretch of road on Cape Cod by over 100 accidents in a year and a half period. That stretches from, as I mentioned, Jones Road to Fresh Pond Road. The developer signed a purchase and sales agreement contingent on them getting a permit for 250 units. They signed it. That should be the absolute maximum, and I won't vote for one more unit beyond that. And at that point, it's still going to tax Sandwich Road beyond what it can handle. I'm sorry, the traffic engineer, basically, he's an applicant's engineer. They give him what they want, and he fills in the details with his math, however he can do it. One of the ways that he did it was he did his traffic study during the, in February, which absolutely everyone here knows it's the slowest time of year. Everybody's in Florida or home hibernating. And they did it not only in February, they did it during school vacation. And anybody who's familiar with that neighborhood, as opposed to a lot of Falmouth, there are a great deal of school-aged children there. And as you know, I mean, if they're on vacation, they're in Florida, or they're home playing with their video games, they absolutely picked the slowest possible week to do this traffic study, and they did it for a reason. I've spoken with the DPW, and initially, we were told that the developer was going to spring for a sidewalk from his, front of his property to Burke Hill Road. Then a few weeks ago, it came down to where it was, they were going to give a contribution of $40,000, and I asked where the sidewalk went, and we were told that, oh, the DPW had their own plans, and they didn't want their money. I knew that was untrue then, and I'm telling you that it's untrue now. You going to deny it?
Chairman, Mr. Fenneren has gone so far outside any normal comment as a realtor project. He spent the last five minutes trashing two professionals, PEs. One of them was hired by you, one of them was hired by us, both professionals. The gentleman used an expression as to what our project looked like, which I would have thought would have been an action to have him removed from the board. Nobody should use that language and refer to young people. Mr. Fenneren is way off base, and it's enough. You need to control what he's saying. It's not polite, it's not correct, and he's insulting your peer reviewer, our peer reviewer, and it's just not appropriate.
Thank you, sir. I don't recall recognizing you. If you want to complain, you can bring it to the Appointing Authority, which is the Board of Selectmen, for his conduct. And I would remind you, I have reined Mr. Fenneren in. I'm asking for his comment. I think we know where he's going, but I'm going to let him speak. This is the final hearing we have on this, sir. Floor is yours, Mark.
Facts are facts. There are things that need to be done to make Sandwich Road even begin to accommodate that, and I absolutely believe that it should be conditioned such that the developer pays his share because no matter what you do, Sandwich Road is going to be damaged beyond repair. It's at its capacity now. There are things that need to be done, and I intend on trying to condition them into I think it's pretty obvious to everybody except the applicant. That's all I got for now.
Suzanne?
I'm in the state of confusion pretty much with what we're supposed to be doing here tonight. I guess we're going to close and vote on A. This is what I'm guessing.
We're not voting. I'm not anticipating a vote this evening.
We're going to close on A.
We're closing the hearing.
Hearing. B is just in the wind. Is that what I'm getting?
What I was, just one second, please.
I'll just finish up. If we're doing A...
Sit down.
Don't sit down.
Can I finish, please, Mr. Freeman? Thank you. Thank you. No, I just am asking my board. Anyway, I don't mean to be confused, but, excuse me? Are you talking to me?
The floor right now is with Mrs. Murphy. You had a question to the board, please. the board, please restate it.
Yes, I'm trying to get clarification. So, tonight we have to close.
Yes, unless we get an extension.
Correct. And we have no information on B other than what Mr. Cordero, who I appreciate, who has been pretty straightforward with us, I feel, other than other people that haven't. But anyway, Plan B, we do not have enough information on, I feel, tonight, at this point. And so I can't vote on that, or I would have to vote a no with lack of information. So Plan A is what I'm voting for unless there is an extension, like you just said. And now, we don't have a list of waivers for Plan B, if I'm correct, again, because we haven't had any peer or anything to do with that. We have no stormwater, we've had no, you know, runoff, nothing to do with, because it seems to be this more asphalt in Plan B, which would be more runoff. So that will be, need to be reviewed. But the list of waivers is only for Plan A that we have now, if I'm correct, again. So we can't even do Plan B tonight. Correct? I'm asking my board members. Is that what you guys are all getting out of this? Yes.
Yes.
And to me, Plan B is what Mass Housing wanted, what the Board of Selectmen wanted, which I think most of these people would want more than Plan A, I would think. I mean, you guys are all, my heart breaks for you all. I mean, sometimes I can't even sleep when I go home because my heart does break for you. I am sorry. Anyway, I'm trying my hardest, believe me. So anyway, I don't know if we need to ask for an extension so we can get information on Plan B, or if he just wants us to go through with Plan A and we vote.
I'll defer to the applicant. Because it's, I share several sentiments. I don't have sufficient information about drainage.
No.
We have, our peer looking at what this, the changes is going to be, the issue, and so on, so.
That's all I have.
I'm gonna let the peers speak. There are different options for you to consider.
I understand the concern that Plan B is not as fully developed. I understand that. But it is certainly been expressed by everybody that you believe it's preferable. So, as I said earlier, and what I see, and I respect, if you don't feel ultimately that there's enough information and you want to deny because of that, or do whatever you want with Plan A, I understand that. But we have both plans before you. That's very typical with 40B, that a developer reserves its rights with what was presented, including the modifications between the engineers that refined some things and improved them. But it's very typical with 40B that...
We do not get a plan three weeks before that the hearing date is closed, a brand-new plan. That is not typical. Not typical. No.
I can agree to disagree. I've done hundreds of these hearings, and it is not at all untypical, okay? My point is that we're not taking either of them off the table for your review. You can condition a permit based on a plan that you believe is better. I think it's totally consistent with 40B and not at all untypical for there to be naturally a condition that, because there are more details, and detail's enough that show, as Phil explained today, the distances, the areas, they're all specific, so the condition would be typical, the final plans to be reviewed for the stormwater and everything else to be consistent with the parameters of the decision. And on the waivers, we did talk about them. Basically, the only changes would, some of the waivers would be removed or reduced. So, yes, it hasn't been prepared exactly for Plan B, but it's pretty easy for you to deal with. And I'm saying this sincerely to try to help. We're not taking anything off the... Mr. Chairman...
There is a limit of what the chair could do. You're gonna get people...
You can ask people to please refrain from the discourtesy. I can tell you how many hearings I've been at, and this is the most discourteous crowd I have ever seen. Thank you. Mr. Chairman, you didn't choose to do that, I did. Thank you, I appreciate that. All I'm saying is that we've put a viable plan before you initially. We made significant changes. It's not untypical for it to come in at this stage. I reiterate that it could have come in earlier if you had agreed to a workshop, which, we're gonna walk out of here and ask you to close the hearing. I have never seen this, and you're not doing anything to try to control it.
Are you familiar with the SJC's recent decision about First Amendment rights and open meetings, sir?
I'm very familiar with it.
All right. I'm not the manners police, and excuse me, I'm just for the point of edification. Someone could walk up here and tell you and me to go F myself, and there's nothing I can do about it, if they've been recognized.
Well, they just did by calling me an SHIT. In any case, all I'm saying is, our position, I don't think is confusing. If you don't feel as though you have enough ultimately when the hearing is closed to not approve Plan B, that's your prerogative. I would disagree, but that's your prerogative. And so, I'm just trying to explain where we think it's at, and if you, several members expressed an indication that you are certainly leaning towards Plan B, and Mr. Duffy articulated a lot of conditions, which we'd have to see them, but those are logical concerns that are legitimate to be addressed. So, I don't know.
I don't know if the board has our May 3 letter with them. In it, we went through and we addressed most of the conditions which Mr. Duffy has asked us about. That was submitted back then. We can all say that, you know, work sessions, working groups might have been better. We might have gotten to this point sooner. Sure. If there's specific items which the board needs answers on, and Phil's here, and we can see how many of them we can answer. If you have specific tasks that we can accomplish, and we can bring them back to you in two weeks, and you have the information to move forward with a positive motion on Plan B, we're willing to do that. But we'd like very specific items, and we would greatly appreciate it that we follow those specific items. Tell us what you want, we'll go get the information. I know Mr. Finneran has a completely different view on the peer reviewers on traffic and everything else, so I would ask the board to not go back into old information and spend a lot of time on traffic and things. But if you have a question as to the drainage, something like that, Phil could most likely have that.
Mr. Thomas?
I have a question for your consultant. To what extent does this plan increase the area of asphalt or imperviousness, which would directly relate to increased runoff? And I know you're not a drainage engineer, but we're both professional engineers, and you can look at plans and make some estimates.
So, your question was, what's the delta on impervious, is what you're asking?
Yes, from the original plan.
From Plan A to Plan B as presented today?
Yes.
Yes. So we have, so it is about nine tenths of an acre. So Plan A has approximately 4.8 acres, and Plan B is about 5.7.
So it increases?
So it does increase. As a member, Murphy had surmised that, she felt that. It does increase. So our stormwater increases in kind to accommodate it. It is 100% recharge here on site, so there's no water leaving the site. So the direct increase of impervious as a result of Plan B increases the stormwater on Plan B, which is why we have those, the areas designated on both the east and the westerly portion of the site to accommodate increased flows, and the potential reservations, we talked about earlier when I was up here, that we may need some underground portions here and there to make sure all of that is completely encompassed on site.
Thank you.
Sure. That's the kind of information we need, that we don't have.
Do you have a follow-up question?
Well, I just have a comment. I mean, why would anyone even contemplate voting for Plan A when Plan B is potentially there? And when you couple with that the fact that we can require that open space anyway, this whole confusion of trying to sell this balance of the land off to the town at a profit shouldn't be considered?
Majority of my concerns were addressed by Mr. Duffy. I agree with him completely that the revised plan, we'll call it Plan B of 520, is clearly, addresses the majority of the local concerns that have been raised since this project was first filed, and it just shows that this could have been done or filed with the applicant from the get-go. I think clearly any approval is going to require a significant conservation easement. I have significant concerns about wastewater. I think that we should condition, or any approval have to be conditional upon input about wastewater and significant input to DEP, as well as conditioning some type of net zero or as close to net zero nitrogen loading. In fact, include other remediation factors such as restricting fertilization and/or irrigation. Traffic is what traffic is. I'm gonna leave that one alone. I think you've hit it enough, Mark. My, I, no, and I share your reservations. The traffic engineer explained his methodology. The board is free to accept or not accept it. The questions, I guess I'm gonna hit to counsel is regarding, there was a comment made by Mr. Dugan, who I've served with the board for a long time, and I agree, we don't have a lot of information about Plan B. We've had some testimony about what the change in wastewater is. There's an offer, or potential offer, to continue another two weeks. Do we have enough, or do you believe there's enough in the record, or what is your suggestion regarding additional information regarding this revised plan? Or could it be conditioned simply that they have to conform with town engineering, wastewater engineering standards, that that would be sufficient to protect the butters? I'll get you in a second, Frank.
Yeah, I think you have enough information on the record. I mean, you didn't have complete information on Plan A, so-called. So you were still gonna have to act on that one way or another, either a denial or an approval with conditions, with denials of waivers or, you know, more stringent conditions on it. So it's sort of the same thing presented with Plan B. I think I'd leave it to the applicant. If they think that they have meaningful information further to provide to you on Plan B that would benefit from keeping the hearing open, I would recommend that you get that, you know, exercise that opportunity. The more information, the better. If they can't really articulate what more information they're willing to provide to assist you in possibly approving with conditions, you know, something substantially based on Plan B, then I'd recommend you go ahead, close the hearing tonight. I think I've heard enough from, you know, the board members expressing their thoughts on what was presented to be comfortable to present, you know, a draft decision for you to deliberate on. So I'd kind of leave it to you. I think, Mr. Murphy had a question?
No, I just, I just want to have an environmental study also.
And I should know, you know, Attorney Murphy had mentioned it very early on, and I think another gentleman from the audience did, and I think I'm hearing this from the board members. You're not locked into, you know, you're acting on a permit application. You've got a specific plan. You've got incomplete information, whatever plan you're looking at, so you're gonna have to act on it one way or another. But you're certainly free to go forward with imposing conditions as the result of information that was provided to you during the hearing. Your local committee, you know, comments on it, the peer reviewers, the need to protect open space on this parcel, you know, the concerns about the subdivision. I think you have enough information to go ahead and render a decision, whether that's a denial or an approval with conditions. So I don't think you have to be sort of hand-tied by the fact that there was Plan B presented. I definitely think if you go ahead, there's enough relevant information on Plan B to show that some of the concerns that have come up during the hearing can certainly be accomplished through Plan B or something, you know, that looks like it. So I think that's where you're at. I think it wouldn't be tragic if you have to close the hearing tonight, and I think if the applicant has more information to provide to you that, you know, can make a better project to present before you, then I would definitely recommend you take him up on the offer to extend it for one more hearing session.
Frank and Mr. Kellum.
Well, I agree with Mr. Pucci that, you know, we should get as much information as we can, but I frankly, I'm a little skeptical of what information they're gonna produce in two weeks' time. That is a very short period of time. And there's, would be, you know, I know that Mr. Murphy and others are looking for quite a bit of information. But I'm also concerned with Plan B, because Plan B, in my view, is kind of illusory. And furthermore, it's presented with a condition that the town pay for and buy some land, which we're not really capable of doing in this short period of time right now. And I wouldn't, I, when I made my remarks earlier tonight, I was talking about Plan A. I'm not talking about Plan B, because they made it very clear, it's not on the table for a vote. And if Plan B were presented, if they agreed, we could vote on Plan B with the condition that the town buy land, I would say, no, we're not gonna do this.
Frank, yeah. That part of it, from a legal perspective, is really a non-starter.
Yeah.
So, you know, in terms of acting on it and taking into consideration issues related to Plan B, and what aspects of Plan B might fit with information that was provided when you were acting on Plan A, those are the types of conditions I'm talking about. But making contingencies on a sale or anything like that, I would not recommend to the board. Because if you were to ask me to do a decision, those types of conditions I would not have in it. I would just do my best to pick and choose, you know, what is based, you know, elements from Plan B that are based on evidence on the record, and that would, that would be incorporated into that decision. But I wouldn't recommend, you know, having any type of contingency for any type of, you know, conveyance of a part of that.
It seems like Plan B is an attempt to have your cake and eat it too, and I just, I just don't like it.
Mr. Pucci, how about if we went down a path where we conditioned Plan A and turned it into Plan B?
Yeah, I mean, that's, you know, that's really the elephant in the room, and yes. And that's, I think, Mr. Murphy alluded to that earlier, that you're not locked into one of these. They've been presented as part of this process, and I don't think you're giving anything away, that if you're contemplating really action on this project that isn't a straight denial. You're talking about conditions that are essentially going to be some type of variation of Plan B more than Plan A. And again, your information is incomplete from my perspective on Plan A, too.
Oh, absolutely, either one of them. The information's been kind of lacking from the get-go.
Skellum?
Thanks. I'm listening to the board, and you may not believe it, but we have listened to you this entire six-month process and then some. We have listened to the audience. We have attempted to meet with many of the people in the audience. That doesn't, hasn't been able to happen.
Yeah, it's 104, we're still five.
Thank you.
The concerns that we're hearing right now from the board, you have major concern is drainage. Mr. Finneran, Mr. Duffy, the rest of the members, Chair, you're looking for clarity on how Plan B works. the rest of the members, Chair, you're looking for clarity on how Plan B works. So in reading between the lines, it appears that if we were sitting here today and we said, okay, we've got the drainage solved, we've got clarification on what's going to happen with that land, whether the town buys it or not, is what you want to know. You want to make sure that that land does not somehow fall out of permanent open space. Those are things that we could work on. What we could do in two weeks, we could work on a draft decision with conditions so that when this board sits at the next time, you have specific conditions in front of you that you can say yea or nay, I don't like this one, and you can edit them before you close the hearing and you can gain input. We could also provide you with a drainage study that would show that there's no difference and no impact on the drainage versus where we were before, because that appears to be one of the critical items. And I, I'd like to also go back to, and Mr. Pucci mentioned that we, there's still some detail missing. The 40B process is not a full set of drawings, process. Many developers come in, what attorneys like Mr. Pucci and others would say, totally incomplete, their colorings. You need to give more. But it's meant to be a conceptual process. They're not final drawings, and that's where your conditions come into place. But we presented to you back on May 3rd a condition to address wastewater. If you read it, we're putting in the exact same language as in your permit. You know, we didn't stand up when people stood there and said that we're going to contaminate water bodies that are uphill, that we can't get to. We'd have to cart the water up it. Because there was no need to embarrass people. We're trying to do this with the engineers' true reports and their information to give you the comfort level. If the board wants two weeks and we can be, come back and have a draft decision at that point based on Plan B, we'll do it.
Follow-up questions from the board or to our council? Jerry, you're reaching for the mic.
I'm still thinking. I'm hoping someone else will chime in. But my guess is we could possibly allow the applicant to submit some revised conditions. We could close the hearing tonight and have a
No, we can't close and have them submit anything.
Not a private discussion?
Any, any information that the board would like for the public, for the public to see, it has to come in during the open session. Once you've closed the hearing, no new information comes in.
Mr. Chairman? Just to follow up. You know, we would agree to the two-week extension. Just want to be candid, we're not going to be, I checked with Phil, we're not going to be able to do the complete updated drainage analysis. But again, and you can discuss it amongst yourselves whenever you deliberate or in two weeks if you do extend it, as we have agreeing to. You know, I think a condition can sufficiently address that. In addition to conditions that were in a decision that we, you know, have been working on and we can send so that you have it quickly, and counsel, of course. You know, we can listen, we have listened to what you've said tonight, and we can explain things a little bit more detailed perhaps between now and two weeks from now. And again, with the conditions intending to address those concerns. So that's where we're at, and, you know, I guess at this point it seems to make sense to try to do as much as we can to satisfy your request to agree on a two-week continuance. And I will sign, you know, the extension like I did last time, a letter that I did the next day. Thanks.
What is the board's position? Do we want to?
I just, oh. I've asked around, I've spoken to a number of people, and I think that the likelihood of this town paying $1.4 million for that land is hovering just about zero. So I think you might want to lean towards removing that from consideration.
Mr. Finer, if you put that in the condition, in the decision, and the rest of the decision is reasonable, we'll certainly consider it. It would be our right to challenge it, but we would certainly consider it. It's a big ask, and we're not necessarily looking to the town to buy that land. There's other open space groups that may want it. That was, it was suggested to us there were, there was resources available if we could move the project to the west and create more open space.
I mean, and that's just information I've gleaned and garnered. Doesn't seem to be any interest in that. Keeping the land open, everyone's interested in that, and I think you know that.
If, if that's the condition and the rest of the decision is reasonable, we'll take it under advisement and mostly, and we'll consider it strongly.
No, because it's, the likelihood of it happening is, like I said, almost zero anyway, so I just wanted to put that.
If we got a good decision, we can make a good business decision.
Jerry?
Can we meet in two weeks? We probably have to meet on alternative night or day.
We're booked, yeah, we're booked.
Well, I mean, we got a Friday, we got a Saturday, you know. It's an important project, one way or the other. If, if, if we can't meet in two weeks and we close it tonight, if they're not going to submit additional information, why keep it open? Oh, I'm sorry, I missed.
Mr. Chairman, through you, is June 13th, that's two weeks. I'm available, our team's available. Do you know if it's available?
We already have two 40Bs for that.
There's also a suggestion that somebody, that we have something to discuss in the form of a document containing conditions. Who's going to prepare that?
We presented to you back on May 3rd. I don't know if you
I don't recall seeing anything on May 3rd.
Yeah, we did submit a package, but we also have been working privately. We've been working privately, and it won't take us long to send you out something. Norine, what dates, be it a different date other than Thursday or Thursday, so Dave can consider, you know, the extension, the continuance.
Is this attached to something else?
No, that came in, we actually delivered extra copies while we had him on the order.
Came in like the day before.
I need it, though. I never thought of it. I mean, you were pushing him in my face while he was yelling at me.
We kissed it made up, let's. No, I, you know, for Dave to consider, but is, is the, is the 20th available?
We do have the 20th open.
I'd like, I'd like to make the motion to close this hearing.
So there's a motion to close the hearing. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
There's a second. Discussion on the motion.
Still a tree plant.
He is a tree plant.
Motion is before the board, the second, to close the hearing. Discussion on the motion.
I think, Mr. Chair, I think it might benefit everybody for a two-week extension or the 20th, you know. I think there's a number of questions. We close it, maybe not premature, it could be prematurely, but we have the opportunity to get additional information. Because this is the biggest decision the town has before us. We should make sure we have enough information so we can sustain our decision, whether it's approved or disapproved.
Mr. Duffy?
I sense that Ms. Murphy is frustrated. I am too. But I'm not willing to let frustration foreclose the possibility of getting more information and possibly, possibly getting someplace here. There's talk that, I think it's worth going forward, one more hearing.
Mr. Finer, want to add anything? I, you second to close.
I've had my fill.
Okay. I'm going to agree at this point only with Frank. I don't, I don't want to keep kicking this can down the road. We need to come to a resolution, one way or the other, here shortly. But I take to heart the comment from Mr. Dugan very much so, that we don't have enough information. And I want to make sure that any condition, any approval is going to be, with conditions would be upheld, or a denial would be upheld based on the most amount of information in the record, so. Orion?
I agree.
So I'm going to vote no, excuse me, no as to close this evening. We don't need a roll call vote over this. All those in favor of closing, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed to closing, please say nay. Nay. That's a three to two vote by my tabulation, so the motion to close is denied. Is there a motion to request a continuance from the applicant to June 20th? Let's make sure I get the date right, June 6/20.
June 20th.
June 20th. Okay. Is there a second? Is that the date that the applicant proposed before we?
Just before we walk away, we should just clarify where the meeting's going to be held.
Yep.
We do have the option to meet back at the Town Hall in the Select Board Meeting Room.
Between that and the overflow room, based on just my rough kind of estimate of attendance, we probably would have capacity.
We should, we should be able to accommodate.
All right. So the question to the applicant, 6/20 is the date. Is that agreeable for an extension till then?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
At Town Hall.
At Town Hall.
You have an annual bill. Couple of requests. Would you like us to take it for a shot at conditions in a draft decision? We haven't seen one. Normally we'd see a draft by this point, but we're more than happy to do it. It does include a lot of the boilerplate.
I agree with Mr. Finer.
Okay, we'll do it. So.
Does he need homework points?
Yes, let's make sure we, so I think
Do you need homework points?
I think the board is very concerned about drainage and/or anything regarding public safety that might come out of shifting of the buildings. I think. You have some concerns?
Concerns with the retention basin.
Thank you.
There's one more acre of, almost one full acre of asphalt. We need to figure out that drainage with, with the chemicals that are in it.
Other specific information from the right side of the board here.
George, Frank had mentioned that part about open space in the project that's for the occupants.
Yes, absolutely.
So you're just going to need an answer from that from the applicant. Either they can come up with some type of proposal along those lines, or they'll say, we don't agree to that. But he had specifically raised that issue tonight, so I would recommend the applicant at least look at it between now and then.
Jerry, Frank, or Mark, anything specific that you want to make sure that information is brought back at the next hearing?
Other than if we could get it as soon as possible, maybe three or four days before. I know we have another limitation, but as soon as possible, we'll just go from there. Unless people have a date specific, they want it in five days.
Well, our standard policy is one week.
Yeah, I know.
So that would be perfect if we can do that.
Okay.
And just for the, Mr. Chair, just for the benefit to the board and the public, so you're keeping the public hearing open. You're going to consider, propose conditions of approval that are going to be presented to you by the applicant on that night. The public hearing will still be open. You still get feedback from both the applicant, anybody else you want to hear from, the public can also comment
Yes.
on it. And just to clarify, from there, you would anticipate closing the public hearing. You will then have 40 days to deliberate on a decision. So there's nothing etched in stone at this point. You're not locked into anything, an approval with, with conditions or a denial. And you can certainly look at a draft decision, another draft decision during deliberations following the close of the public hearing. That's what I would anticipate you doing. Typically, what I'll do with the board is, they will indicate to me, here's the type of draft decision we want to see. You know, similar to the lines that you've set tonight, or later on, if you determine that, you know, you're looking at a denial, you would indicate to counsel, we would like to see a draft denial decision, or we'd like to see a draft approval with conditions on this particular plan, set of conditions, and our general, you know, decisions that we've given you on the waiver requests. And we want to see that draft decision and then deliberate on that. And then your deliberations would be open to the public, but you can receive no further input at that point. It would just be your, your discussion on the draft decision. That's what I would recommend you do.
That sounds right on spot and point.
A point of clarification. When we talk about additional chemicals coming from road grade runoff, we're talking about generally accepted engineering practices of civil engineers when they consider runoff from asphalt. Not any specific chemical analysis of 85 different chemicals or something like that. I mean, I know, Rami, it can have CAD being in it, it can have a whole bunch of stuff, but the profession has laid that stuff out in a number of documents.
So there's a motion to continue to January, excuse me, June 20th. Is it, who was the second? Or was there a second?
I'll second.
All right. Any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that's a vote. The zoning administrator will get you the appropriate form, counsel. Is there any, I think that's going to conclude at this point everything under this continuation. We have no other new hearings this evening. Under open meeting, we have minutes of May 9th, 2024. Has every member of the board had opportunity to review the minutes? I'm sorry, May? I have May 9th. You, oh, this is, wait, I have an old one.
Sorry.
You're getting me confused, Sam. Minutes of May 9th, 2024. Has every member of the board had opportunity to review the minutes of May 9th?
So moved.
Are there any corrections or additions?
I apologize.
No, no, this is, it's wide, you know. All right. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of May 9th, 2024? Suzanne, second, and Mark, discussion of the motion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we'll be tabling the minutes of May 16th to May 23rd. Under number 208223 Galasso, 545 Main Street, review of draft decision with a vote anticipated. We're not taking that up this evening. I don't believe Norine has a
The board is reminded that if you have any comments on the most recent draft that circulated, to please have that in by the close of this weekend.
When was that circulated?
It came in at the end of the day today.
On, on, on Main Street?
Yes.
Yes. So I guess I didn't see that.
So you wouldn't have seen it prior to this meeting.
Okay.
Norine, do you have any update for us this weekend?
I offer you nothing.
Excellent. Any board discussion?
A cell tower is coming.
Board updates? Future agenda items?
You will be referring to a new cell request on
Right behind St. Elizabeth's.
At the church for, the request for a referral to the Cape Cod Commission.
Okay. Great. That's quite all right, Suzanne. So our next scheduled public hearing is June 6th, 2024, 6:00 PM in the Selectman's Meeting Room, Town Hall. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
I'll second. Any discussion, seeing that all, favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, we are adjourned.